Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call this Bloomington City Council meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, November 13th, 2023. Thank you for everybody joining us here in the council chambers and everybody watching online. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you're able, please rise, remove your caps, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome. Good to see folks here in the chambers and looking forward to the discussion that we'll be having tonight. Our first order of business tonight is the approval of our agenda, council. On the agenda this evening, we've got three items under our introductory items. We've got the introduction of new employees, and that will be our CIO department. Looking forward to meeting those folks. Proclamation regarding Small Business Saturday, and we will be canvassing the city general election results from last Tuesday. Item three is our consent business. Councilmember Martin has the consent business, and there are 10 items on the consent agenda tonight, so thank you for taking that on, Councilmember Martin. Item four is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We have two public hearings this evening. The first is item 4.1, our public hearing to approve the feasibility study and order the 2024 Pavement Management Program Street Reconstruction Project. Item 4.2 is a public hearing regarding Seagate Technology Resolutions of Support for their grant and loan applications. For item 4.2, I'm going to be handing the gavel over to Councilmember Dalisandro, as I have a business relationship with a competitor of Seagate, so I'll be stepping away from the dais at that time, and Councilmember Dalisandro will take it. Item five, under our organizational business, we will hear our continued updates regarding the 2024 budget. 5.1 is a discussion on the utility rates and budget for 2024. Item 5.2 is a budget discussion on our information technology department. 5.3, same discussion regarding community development, and 5.4 is our legal department, all the budget discussions for 2024. We'll wrap up our evening as we always do. Item 5.5, our city council policy and issue update. Council, any questions or any additions to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I will move tonight's agenda as stated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept tonight's agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero, and it's a good opportunity to note that Councilmember Carter is not with us this evening. She is traveling, so is not with us this evening. Now that we have an agenda, we are on to item 2.1, which is the introduction of new employees. Amy Chaney, our CIO, will be introducing... employee or employees?
Just one.
Just one, okay, very good. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It is my pleasure to introduce Althea Getabeku. She joined the IT department on September 18th of this year, and she is our office support specialist. She's responsible for purchasing, contract management, and really helping run the department more efficiently. Althea has more than 18 years of experience in IT and administration, and she most recently worked for Reus Radiology, where she was an IT analyst. Althea, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. It's an honor to be part of the city of the Lomitan family, and I look forward to the collaboration. Thank you.
Well, thanks much for being here this evening. Welcome. Looking forward to working with you and seeing you around City Hall, so thanks much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item 2.1, or 2.2 on our agenda is a proclamation. I'm going to make my way down to the podium. Our proclamation today is regarding Small Business Saturday, which is November 25th, 2023, and I would like to invite to the podium Alberto Diaz from Lurio Boots here in Bloomington, a small business owner, and Mike Rickert, his business associate. If you would please come on up and join me. I'm going to read the proclamation and then turn the microphone over to you, and then we'll, of course, do a grip and grin, because we've got to do the grip and grin if we have folks here, so welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday, November 25th, 2023. Whereas Bloomington celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to the local economy and community. According to the United States Census, there are more than 38,000 small businesses with fewer than 100 employees in Hennepin County, representing more than 96% of all businesses in Hennepin County. And whereas for many residents, the Thanksgiving holiday kicks off a season of gathering, dining, shopping, and experiencing arts and culture, and consumers know that supporting small, independently-owned businesses have positive social, economic, and environmental impacts. And whereas Bloomington has partnered with Hennepin County to support small business Saturday with the multi-jurisdictional Love Local campaign, which encourages residents to support local, independently-owned businesses that create jobs, boost the local economy, and make our communities vibrant and livable. And whereas the United States Small Business Administration, as well as advocacy groups and other private and public organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim Saturday in November 25th, 2023, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Bloomington, Minnesota, and I urge the residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and, of course, throughout the year. Dated this 13th day of November, 2023, as I mentioned in the proclamation, we know that we're entering a time that's very important from a retail standpoint, from a small business standpoint, the Thanksgiving season kicking off the holiday buying season, and that Saturday after Thanksgiving is a perfect opportunity to support businesses in Bloomington. Now, as I mentioned, I'm going to turn the microphone over. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
And good evening, everyone. Alberto wanted me to say a few words. My name is Mike Rickart. I'm a business consultant with Lurio Boots, and Alberto Diaz is the owner, and he just wanted me to say a few words on his behalf. So Alberto is a proud owner of Lurio Boots. Alberto wanted me to say, I want to express my sincere gratitude to Mayor Bussie, along with the esteemed members of the city council, for extending a warm invitation to Lurio Boots to participate in the Small Business Saturday proclamation. Operating my business in a city that truly acknowledges the vital contribution of small businesses to the local economy makes me feel incredibly fortunate. The collaboration efforts between the city of Bloomington and Hennepin County, particularly through initiatives like Love Local and Elevate Hennepin, have proven invaluable to entrepreneurs like myself in sustaining and expanding our businesses. As Lurio Boots gears up for significant expansion in 2024, we are confident in the partnership that we have found at City Hall. Individuals such as Barb Wolf and Bernadette Gillespie, among others, have been pillars of support, guiding us through our growth plans with unwavering assistance. Once again, I extend my heartfelt thanks for all of you for including us tonight. It is an honor to be part of a community that recognizes and champions the spirit of small businesses. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those kind words, and congratulations. I was going to ask you about the expansion. I know there's an expansion coming up this year. Congratulations to you. And if you don't recall, or if you do recall, at our State of the City address a couple of years ago, Lurio Boots was highlighted, and if you're ever in the market for boots, my goodness, do they have some nice boots there, so please do check them out. So I would like to make this proclamation presentation to you, and why don't we step over this side, so Barb can get a picture of us? And she can take a picture with us as well? The next item on our agenda, item 2.3. You may have heard, we had an election this past week here in Bloomington, and item 2.3 is a responsibility that the council has every... after every election, where we canvass the city general election results, and our city clerk, Christina Scipione, is here to lead us through this. Good evening, Ms. Scipione, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and city council. Here I am again. Another election season is behind us, and this is kind of part of the final steps for making those results official. So I know you have a robust meeting, and I'll get right to our statistics and to our Hopefully this clicker works for me. Thank you, Mike, for being back. Appreciate that. So we had a busy election cycle this year. Our overall turnout was 35.91% of our registered voters here in Bloomington. That's the highest turnout it's been for a regularly scheduled municipal election in 20 years, right? So that's pretty exciting. It was a busy day in our precincts, but we had a lovely crew of election judges and behind-the-scenes support staff to get us through the day without any major issues. So it's pretty exciting for us in the elections office. We had 20,878 ballots cast. That's about 5,000 more than were cast in 2021, and of those, about 22% were cast absentee or early, and of that, 88% were right here at City Hall. So it was an important service that we provided here at City Hall for our voters who wanted to come and cast their ballots early. We had about 501 voters who registered on Election Day, and so our new total registered voters in the city is 58,134. Next slide. So a reminder, before we get into the results, of with ranked choice voting, how we calculate our thresholds and how we take a look at election night results, and then we'll look at round reporting results as well. So on election night, we are looking at a total maximum threshold to determine if anybody has won that contest on election night. And so what that means is we're taking a look at all of the votes that have been cast, dividing that in half and adding one, so 50% plus one of all the votes that have been cast. So the votes cast include first-choice votes for candidates, first-choice votes for write-ins, and then undervotes and overvotes in the first-choice ranking. An undervote is where someone chose not to fill in that first-choice ranking, and an overvote is where they filled in too many targets or voted for too many candidates in that first-choice ranking. And so it can get confusing on election night when we're looking at the Secretary of State's offices, those results are rolling in, because the Secretary of State's office does not report out those undervotes and overvotes, and so the percentage that you see on the state's website doesn't include that total maximum threshold, that total number of votes cast. And so every election cycle, we have some that are close, right? And we do the calculation then, looking at all of the votes that are cast that election night, and we'll look at those for each race as we move forward. Next slide. Once we move, if a race does require tabulation rounds, then the threshold changes to active ballots divided by two and adding one. And an active ballot are all of the ballots cast minus ones where there is not a vote for a continuing candidate on it. So you see in the round results that we actually report out the inactive ballots, and then we recalculate the threshold based on the number of active ballots that are currently in that race. And we can do that, right, during round results, because when we're doing our tabulation, we take a look at the first-choice ranking, and if it's blank or there's an overvote, we look at the second to see if there's a continuing candidate, and then we look at the third, if there isn't anything in the second, to see if there's a continuing candidate there. And so then we confirm, yep, those ballots are inactive, they don't have any votes for that race in that... for that ballot. So let's move on to how we tabulated this year. You'll remember in 2021, where it was our first election using ranked choice voting, we did a hand count of all of the races that required tabulation. In that case, there were three races that required tabulation, and it took us three days to do that hand count with 5,000, or, sorry, 5,000 fewer ballots than we had this year. This year, we used the spreadsheet tabulation method, which is what Minneapolis, St. Louis Park, and Minnetonka use for their ranked choice voting races as well. And we were able to bump up the timeline of that. Instead of starting the Thursday after Election Day, we could start the Wednesday, the day after the election, at 1:00, and we were able to conduct all of our required tabulation rounds in the span of about four hours versus what would have probably been four or five days. So we probably wouldn't be canvassing here tonight had we done a hand count. Using that spreadsheet tabulation uses what's called the Cast Vote Record, which is an Excel spreadsheet of all of the ballots that were cast for that race, and I have an example up here. And basically, every row in that spreadsheet, it represents a ballot and how those votes were cast on that ballot. So we're still using the data from the ballots, but instead of having to physically move everything, we have trained staff working in pairs that move that data electronically. They can use sort in Excel, they can use filter in Excel to move faster through that tabulation process. So even though it's electronic, it works the same as you would see if you were hand counting the ballots. So for those races, we have two pairs of trained staff that are working independently of each other, and then they check in with each other throughout the process and with me throughout the process to ensure that their numbers match, that they've done the process the same way the whole way through. And the exciting part about that, too, is we also save their work throughout the process. So if anybody wanted to go back and check to see exactly how things were sorted, that data is available, people can put in a data request to receive that, and they can see exactly how those ballots were tabulated during those rounds. So on elec... we'll get into the results now. Thank you, Mike. So in the mayoral race, our threshold, our maximum possible threshold was 10,440 ballots, and Tim Bussie had 11,859, so he met that maximum possible threshold, and there were no tabulation rounds required in that race. Next race. For our council member-at-large race, we had a maximum possible threshold of 10,440, and Jenna Carter had 12,173, so she met that maximum possible threshold and no tabulation rounds were required. Now, our special election for the council member-at-large for the two-year term, that did not have a candidate that on election night met that maximum possible threshold. The threshold for that was, again, 10,440, and so that did require tabulation rounds, which we started at 1:00 PM on Wednesday. And if we go to the next slide, we can see the results of those tabulation rounds. So after our first round of tabulation, we ended up with a revised threshold of 9,690, and we did not have a candidate that met that threshold. So in... after that first round, Collins and the undeclared write-ins were defeated, which meant then we looked at those voters' second choice on their ballot and reallocated those accordingly. So you can see that in the second round, Sam Wu gained, and Jonathan Minks gained. We had additional inactive ballots, and then we re-tabulated in the round two our new threshold, and at that point, Sam Wu had met that max... or that threshold, and so he was declared the winner, and no additional tabulation rounds were required. Moving on to District Two, on election night, our maximum possible threshold was 2,693, and Duane A. Loman had 2,713, so he met that maximum possible threshold and no tabulation rounds were required. Next slide. In District Two, our maximum possible threshold was 2,960, and Sean Nelson had 3,070, so he met that maximum possible threshold and no additional tabulation rounds were required. In District Three, our maximum possible threshold was 3,139, and Lona De La Sando had 3,180, so she met that maximum possible threshold and no tabulation rounds were required. And then in District Four, our maximum possible threshold was 1,650, and we did not have a candidate on election night that met that maximum possible threshold. So we did tabulation rounds on Wednesday afternoon, and we'll go to the next slide for those tabulation rounds. And as you can see from our tabulation rounds, once we went through that, we still had... we had 197 inactive ballots, so that then changed our threshold to 1,551, and Victor Rivas had 1,613, and so he met that threshold and was declared the winner of that race without additional tabulation rounds being necessary. That was a lot of numbers that I just rode through. We have a couple more for our ballot questions. For the Community Health and Wellness Center, that question passed by 56.18%. Next one. Our Bloomington Ice Garden Improvements, that question passed 53.05%. And the Nine Mile Creek Corridor Renewal, that question passed by 52.30%. So the next steps for wrapping up our election cycle, I'm excited to announce we have a post-election review, which is a hand count of ballots from one race, and in this case, it will be the District Four council member race, and that is to show to the public and to demonstrate that our spreadsheet tabulation matches the results of a hand-count tabulation. And so it's similar to what they do every state general election year, where they recount the top three races on the ballot. This, we will recount one of our races that required spreadsheet tabulation to confirm that our tabulation methods were correct. And so that will be held in the Black Box Theater at 9:00 AM on November 21st, and the members of the public are welcome to attend. I love talking elections, so if anybody wants to come see the process, see how it works with the physical ballots, I'm more than happy to answer anybody's questions when they're there and explain how that works. Did you have a question, Mayor? Okay. The deadline to request a recount is the day before, November 20th, and then the oath of office for council member-at-large special election will be November 27th, and then the oath of office for our mayor, our other-at-large council member, and all of our districts will be January 2nd, 2024. So mark your calendars. With that, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Scipione, I appreciate it, and I'll say it's hard to tell that you love elections. I'm excited about it. You hide that well. Appreciate the information and the explanation. It's always good to get that continuing explanation, I think, as people continue to learn and understand better ranked choice voting, so appreciate that. Council, any questions of Ms. Scipione regarding the canvassing of the elections? No questions? Well, very good. Before we take a vote to approve, which I'm assuming is going to go in a good direction, I wanted to thank you, I wanted to thank your staff. Please extend our thanks to them. I want to publicly thank our election judges, who did outstanding work once again on a record turnout in the... on offshore election, and just generally, thank you for making Election Day as uneventful as possible. I mean, that's the best... the best thing you can say about Election Day, is that things run really well, and people don't wait too terribly long in lines, and that the results come out in a very efficient fashion, and you do that, and I appreciate that. And I especially appreciate the early voting setup here at City Hall was very well-used. I know that. I was here many days and saw the lines and saw people stepping in to vote, and I know people appreciated that. I talked to a lot of folks who really did see that as a benefit and very useful, so thank you. Thanks to you, thanks to your staff, thanks to the election staff, the election judges, and everybody who did an outstanding job. So thank you so very much, one more time.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's a team effort. We have a fabulous team, and we get a lot of support from the city manager's office and from the city council, so we appreciate the support and the resources to run great elections here in Bloomington.
Very good. Thank you much. Council, if there's no questions, I would look for a motion to approve the declaration of results of the November 7th, 2023 municipal general election submitted by the election judges for that election. Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Martin, to approve the declaration of the results of the November 7th, 2023 municipal general election. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. Move on to item three on our agenda, our consent agenda. Councilmember Martin has tonight's consent business. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So so far, I have heard about holds on 3.1 and 3.6, as well as 3.9. Was there anything else? Okay. Seeing no other additions, I will motion approval of items 3, 2 through 3, 5, 3, 7, and 3, 8, as well as 3, 10.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Dalisandro, to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Councilmember Martin, I'm sorry, you said item 3.?
3.1 and 3.6 were both Councilmember Loman.
Councilmember Loman, I'm in 3.1. Let's start with that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So while I was out door knocking, and then also, just relatively recent, I had a resident contact me regarding our travel expenses, and we had a good conversation about the travel expenses, and after I got a chance to talk to him at length, you know, today, he had a better understanding of kind of what this particular business thing that we do in going to the National League of Cities, and I explained to him, you know, the learning that goes on there, and then the business meeting that's there, that we are, you know, part of that association, and we do take votes upon that around policy, particular issues that are part of that. And then he had a, you know, longer conversation about just travel and his concern about that, and I said, you know, I really appreciate that, and then he also mentioned to me the fact that, you know, one of our strategic priorities was around this idea of affordability and that type of thing. So he's just concerned about what we do around travel, and I thought I would bring that back for you, Mayor, and for the staff to understand that, and I don't know if there's something we can do to, you know, discuss or talk about that, but wanted to hold this, not to vote against this, but just to mention that, you know, acknowledge that, and there's other folks that are out there that are concerned about that and want to make sure we're aware of that. So with that being said, I'm ready to move this forward, so I'll move to approve the out-of-state travel expenses. They're listed here in the agenda for the National League of Cities Conference in Atlanta, Georgia.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Martin, to accept item 3.1 on tonight's consent agenda. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Councilmember Loman, item 3.6.
Thank you, Mayor. I really just held this one in addition. This is about a side yard setback that was in my district, and I had the opportunity to talk to one of... you know, there's a few residents that are there that are a little bit concerned about some loss of trees and other items that are part of that, and what we wanted to do is just make sure that we acknowledged that there were some concerns sent into staff and that we're going to get back to them. Now, I know that staff member Lundell Pease is here, and I'm not sure if he wants to comment on it at all, but we're set and ready to go with those concerns, and we're going to get back to him about those concerns. So if there isn't anybody else who's got any other questions, I'm more than happy to move this forward as well.
See any other questions? Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Dalisandro, question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did... if I read that correctly, I thought that there were conditions related to the concerns around tree removal and things like that for this approval. Is that right? Did I read that correctly?
Mr. Verugui or Mr. Pease? I'm going to call... Let's call Lundell up. Mr. Pease?
Hi there, Mayor, Councilman Dalisandro. There are no specific requirements for the trees, because we don't have a way to regulate them. What we did leave it as condition one, we left rather vague, because we could get several property owners to work together, and we may find a better solution. So instead of having a fixed plan that you have tonight, we're trying to find it, working with them, trying to find the best alternative, and then that will become the approved plan. That'll be part of the variance.
Thanks, appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Since this is open, a couple of quick questions. Has anything changed since it was originally platted in terms of ordinances? And my second question is, where is the front yard? Because it appeared on everything... everything is a five-yard setback, so why is there no front yard setback of something like 30 feet where there is everywhere else?
I'm glad you asked that, because some of you, well, I don't think anywhere here in 19... nineteen ninety-seven was when we quit doing flag lots, which is traditionally having a fifteen-foot neck connecting the street and then making this the front yard. We've had a history of flag lots being a problem, and in nineteen ninety-seven, that council said no more. But this was already subdivided, and it was a vacant lot, and we had to deal with it. So the front yard is actually where the street access is, which is right here. And then this should be the front, two sides, and the rear.
Thank you very much for the clarification, because I think for laypeople to look at that, it's very confusing, and so that makes sense, and I have no idea how many years nineteen ninety-seven was ago. Good, good job to the council then.
Counsel, other questions or comments on this? If not, we have a motion, and then we have a second, I believe, right?
No, we haven't done that yet.
We haven't done that yet, my bad. I haven't done.
That's okay. I got ready to make it.
Councilmember Loman, go ahead.
So I'll go ahead and move to adopt a resolution approving a variance to reduce the side yard setbacks for driveway from five feet to one point five feet for access to a new single-family home located at eleven oh forty-five Gerard Curve.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Martin, to accept item three point six on tonight's council consent business as stated. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. And the third item was, uh, to be held was item three point nine, and I actually held that, and I am going to abstain in this vote. Just wanted to make sure that was clear as we take the vote separately. I'm going to abstain just because I wasn't part of the conversation that took place around this, uh, this legal services agreement. Any other questions on that, Counsel? Uh, I think it's still okay that I can call it, even if I don't vote. I'm going to, uh, look for a motion to approve item three point nine.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dalisandro, second by Councilmember Loman, to accept item three point nine on tonight's consent business. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, with one abstention by Mayor Bussi. Motion carries five zero one. Thank you very much, Councilmember Martin, for your work tonight. We will move on to item four on our agenda, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. Our first public hearing is item four point one, which is a public hearing to approve the feasibility study and order the two thousand and twenty-four pavement management program Street Reconstruction Project. We have, as we always do when we talk PMP, we have Brian Hanson and Bob Simons here this evening. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. A little presentation for you here. The usual presentation.
There we go.
All right, well, good evening once again. We're here tonight for the two thousand and twenty-four PMP Street Improvement Project. As Mayor mentioned, I'm Bob Simons, with our engineer, senior civil engineer in our engineering department, our design and infrastructure area. I'll be giving the first portion of the presentation, then Brian Hanson, our development coordinator, will give the, a portion of the presentation related to our adjusted front footages and our assessments, and then I'll wrap it up. So to start, what is our pavement management program, or PMP as we refer to it? Many of you have heard me give this spiel a few different times, but, um, our, a pavement management program was implemented back in the early nineties. It's our overall asset management plan for our city streets here in Bloomington. We have just over three hundred and forty miles of local roadways in Bloomington. This was implemented to reduce the overall cost of our street repair by taking the right action at the right time, looking at the right maintenance technique to take at the right time for our city streets and our infrastructure. To do that, we have a, every street segment in Bloomington has a pavement condition index or a PCI value. Every year, one-third of the city streets are locked, overall conditions monitored. This is entered into our, our database, and it gives us a PCI value between zero and one hundred. We use this to help us come up with a forecast for the next five to seven years on what would be the best maintenance techniques for those street segments. And every spring, we do a drive around, and we update that map based on conditions from the past winter, other projects that would be coming up. So we're constantly updating that map. We, with our street reconstruction and our street mill and overlay projects, we do multiple miles per year of those projects to help to get a better economy of scale, which in turn helps to manage the assessments that are allocated to the adjacent property owners for these reconstruction projects, and just also helps to better manage our, cost-effectively manage our streets for all taxpayers. Why was PMP implemented? Prior to PMP, we didn't have a specific plan in place, so we were finding way too many streets that were falling into that problem category. We needed to come up with a more cost-effective solution. And here you see the goal of the pavement management program, our pavement lifecycle. On the left, you see normal road life between whether it's street construction or reconstruction. If you'd put off any sort of routine maintenance, the, the road life decreases significantly from that if you would, the goal of our pavement management program, which you see on the right. By implementing street seal coats and street mill and overlays at the opportune times, we can greatly increase the life of our pavement. And I should mention, as I mentioned earlier, we have just over three hundred and forty miles of streets. We started back in the early nineties, we haven't gotten around to all of the street segments for reconstruction, and also for our street segments that don't have existing curb and gutter, we, we don't do, when we do a reconstruction, we install curb and gutter, but we also, we don't mill and overlay street segments that don't have curb and gutter because it's not cost-effective with the, the conditions that can occur without that curb and gutter deterioration a little bit quicker. So once a street is reconstructed, it falls fully into the program of the seal coats and the mill and overlays with the PMP program. A few characteristics of our PMP program. For our street reconstruction, we do typically three to four and a half miles per year. This year is no different. We're at just under three miles with some additional items on this project as well that I'll get to here in a minute. Our street mill and overlay is about nine miles of streets per year. Around two thousand and twenty-six, we're looking to drop that to eight miles per year, but typically in the eight to nine mile range. For our street seal coats, we do about twenty-five miles per year. Some of the goals of the program, to keep the overall PCI, their pavement condition index, the average for the city to over seventy. As you can see, our average PCI is holding pretty well, up at seventy-eight last year and this year as well. And also keeping the problem streets to, which piece, with, which have PCI's less than thirty-five to under ten percent of the total mileage in the city. How our different PMP techniques are funded? We have our street reconstruction, which is what this project entails that we're discussing here tonight, is funded through special assessments, and Brian will give some information on that, as well as MSA's state aid and local state aid funds. We don't have any state aid routes on this reconstruction project this year, but some years we do. And then also our water, sanitary, and storm sewer utility funds cover our utility work. For our street mill and overlay technique, it's funded through franchise fees, a fee that we collect from Centerpoint Energy and Excel Energy to help with the maintenance of our, of our infrastructure. Also, once again, local and MSA's state aid, as well as our water, sanitary, and storm sewer utilities. And then our seal coating and our trail and sidewalk improvements are funded through franchise fees. The overall improvement project process for these street improvement projects, we're here tonight for the public hearing or to order the, the street segments for construction. Whichever streets are ordered for construction, in the winter of twenty-four, we'll prepare the plans and specifications for those. Moving into the spring, we'll bid the, the entire project to all to a contractor. And in the summer of two thousand and twenty-four, we'll construct that project, and then we'll be back in the fall, after the adjacent residents receive their final assessment notice, we'll have some additional informational meetings regarding that, and we'll come back for a public hearing to approve the special assessments for this project. A few of the additional items on this project that I'd like to mention, Lyndale Avenue is one of the street segments on our list. It's been on the list a few different years. We're looking to make connections to the, the DNR and MinDOT trails that were recently constructed adjacent to this area with this project. Also, we've been working with U.S. Fish and Wildlife on the reconstruction of the parking lot on the south side of Lyndale Avenue. It's owned by U.S. Fish and Wildlife, the work will be funded by U.S. Fish and Wildlife, but we're working with them on the design of that, of that reconstruction to include it with this, with this project as well. And also, with the possible federal shutdown implications, U.S. Fish and Wildlife would be, would be put on hold for a period of time, but we're continuing to work through, hoping that there's no holdups in that regard, but just wanted to mention that. And also, Lyndale Avenue, with the additional work that's being done with this project, we'd plan on bidding Lyndale Avenue as its own project. It'll be assessed as part of the two thousand and forty-one project, but it'll be bid as its own project out to a contractor this coming spring. Eighty-second Street, it's not on the list of street segments, it's not an assessed segment of street on this project. However, there's water main upsizing that's needed on eighty-second Street between Twelfth Avenue and Old Cedar Avenue. So we'd be looking at doing that work with this, this larger package of this project that's bid out to a contractor, funded through our South Loop, the cost split between our South Loop Development Fund and also our water, a water utility. And then eighty-fourth and Dupont, eighty-fourth Street and Dupont Avenue are two segments that are on the list of street segments for the two thousand and forty-one. There's some sanitary sewer upsizing that will be needed at an hour in the future for a Penn and American South Town Development, working with a, working with our utility staff and a consultant on determining what the best route for that sanitary sewer upsizing would be. And if it is determined that we would be upsizing on the route that includes eighty-fourth and Dupont, we would like to include that with this project, and staff is still reviewing the funding options for that work if it were to be included. And now Brian will give some information on our assessments.
All right, thanks, Bob. So as part of the nosed public hearing that the residents received for tonight's meeting, we did include an estimated assessment with that, and that is required per state statute if we're going to levy a special assessment. The adjacent property owners need to be notified of, of the estimated assessment at that point. And we applied the city's special assessment policy to calculate that special assessment, or estimated special assessment, I should say. And the adjusted front footage is really the basis of our assessments calculations here in the city of Bloomington. And we use an adjusted front footage, so what that does is it equates all lots as though the rectangular lots regardless of their shape. And then, so the actual frontage of a parcel may not equal the adjusted front footage depending on the shape of the parcel. So if it's a typical rectangular-shaped parcel, the adjusted front footage would match that, but if you have a unique shape, a larger parcel, a pie-shaped parcel, you would see a different adjusted front footage versus your actual frontage. And then, when those are all calculated, that multiplied by the rate for the improvement that you're subject to an assessment for is how that assessment is calculated. So for the two thousand and twenty-four project, here are the two improvements that are subject to an assessment for this year's project, potential project. That first one is surfacing. So the estimated cost for all the surfacing improvements for the project is roughly four point two million dollars. And again, these are estimated rounded numbers here, so they're rounded to the nearest, you know, whole dollar here. The adjusted front footage of all the parcels that were subject to a surfacing assessment is just over twenty-four thousand, so that's adding the individual adjusted front footage of all those parcels that are subject to that assessment. So that total cost for that surfacing improvement divided by those total AFFs equal that one hundred and seventy-six dollars per foot. So that's the hundred percent rate that we would need to assess adjacent property owners to pay for that improvement a hundred percent through special assessments. The city's policy is to assess at two different rates. Single-two- and three-family properties are assessed at a twenty-five percent rate, so that breaks down to approximately forty-four dollars per foot. And all other property types are assessed at a fifty percent rate, so that's at about eighty-eight dollars per foot right now based on our estimated amounts. Additionally, we did the same exercise for curb and gutter. You can see that total cost is right about one point one million dollars. The adjusted front footage in this one is much less than the surfacing. The reason being, the city's policy is to assess adjacent property owners for the initial installation of curb and gutter, when it's first installed on the street. If curb and gutter is already in place, which on many segments being considered this evening, there is curb and gutter in place, there may be curb and gutter that's replaced as part of the project in areas where it's in disrepair or we have drainage issues, but that work is not assessed back to the property owner. So you're only charged the first time that curb and gutter is installed, which is the difference in those two total AFFs you see there. So again, during the same process, we have that one hundred and twenty-two dollars per foot is that hundred percent rate, and then breaking it down into our single-two- and three-family at thirty-one dollars per foot, and all other property types are at that fifty percent rate of sixty-two dollars per foot. So the estimated assessments that property owners received, depending on which improvements they were subject to an assessment for, took their AFF multiplied by the appropriate rate, and they added those together, and that's how we calculate the estimated assessments they received in the mail. This graphic here just shows some comparisons of just other twin cities municipalities and kind of their, their process for assessing, so you can kind of see how Bloomington's process of twenty-five and fifty percent rates compare to other adjacent communities here in the area. So next, we're going to talk about some assessment payment options. Again, if the project is ordered, and when we come back in the fall with the assessment roll, if that is approved by council and levied, property owners would have from that date until November twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-four to pay a portion of the assessment if they choose, a hundred-dollar minimum, up to the whole amount if they wanted to, and avoid paying any interest. After November twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-four, any remaining balance automatically gets rolled onto the property tax statement, and interest is applied annually to the declining principal, and that principal is spread out evenly over ten years with that interest, as I said, applied to the declining principal. So if a property owner was assessed for the work as part of the two thousand and twenty-four project, chose not to prepay any amount, the first time they would see a bill for this work would be with their May of two thousand and twenty-five property tax statement. And if they were to let that assessment play out over the entire ten years of the assessment, the last payment they would see would be with their October of two thousand and thirty-four property tax statement. After the, after the assessment is levied to the property taxes, the, the property owner has two options for payment. It's to pay what is due with that particular property tax statement, or at any point during those ten years, they could choose to pay off the remaining balance in full, and if they do so, they would avoid paying any additional interest. Unfortunately, the county does not accept partial payments after it's rolled onto the property taxes, so if someone wanted to pay it down a little faster, that's not an option. You can only pay the amount due with your, with your statement or the entire amount in full. The city does have a hardship deferral program for those that qualify. This is not a forgiveness of the assessment, but rather a deferral of it, and there are certain requirements that one must meet, and you need to meet these annually. So if you, if someone is interested in this, our assessment, our assessing division can help you with that to see if you do qualify. And if you do qualify, you must provide proof of qualification on an annual basis, like I said. If you no longer qualify after it's gone into a deferral, at which point you no longer qualify or the property is sold to a new owner, that assessment becomes full, assessment becomes due in full at that point. So that's something to keep in mind. And interest still does apply to that assessment while it's in that deferral status. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Bob.
All right, a little bit of information on property owner contact. All the adjacent residents had received their direct mailing, their notice of public hearing with their estimated assessment notice with that, or amount with that, with a date for an informational meeting. We held informational meetings in the Public Works Training Room on Monday, October thirtieth for the Lyndale Avenue segment, and then on Monday, November sixth, for the remainder of the segments on the project. And per a typical year, we've been fielding phone calls prior to, up to today, and then I'm sure we'll have some post-meeting questions and comments as well. But for this project, we had some neighborhood street width surveys that were sent out. I don't know if any of you remember from last year, we did Mission Lane was part of the two thousand and twenty-three reconstruction, and we send out surveys to the adjacent property owners because they're kind of a different, unique area. We have three of those this year. We have Orchard Springs Road, Overlook Drive, and Meadowview Road, where they have existing narrower street widths, lower traffic volumes. Our standard curb and gutter width for when we come and install curb and gutter is thirty-two feet from face of curb to face of curb. We sent notices out, or surveys out to the, these three neighborhoods with the same thing we did for Mission Lane last year, in that asking if they would like the option of going with the thirty-two-foot standard or possibly reducing to a twenty-eight-foot width with a limiting parking on one side of the road. Some of these street segments already add a twenty-eight to thirty-foot width, so it won't be much of a change in that regard. We've, we've received mixed results from the Overlook Drive and Meadowview Road, folks, almost a fifty-fifty split, but we're going to, we're going to continue to receive responses probably through mid to late, well, we are to mid-November, probably to late-November from those residents. But for the Overlook, excuse me, the Orchard Springs residents, there was a, a strong response out of the ten properties it was sent to. Initially, we received response from eight of the ten that they wanted to go with a twenty-eight-foot width, which is pretty much what the existing width is out on Orchard Springs Road. But they're all, they also, a number of them included an option C, which was reconstructed at a twenty-eight-foot width, but do not install curb and gutter. So we had good conversation with a number of the residents at the neighborhood meeting last Monday, November sixth. I think seven of the ten properties were represented, and I believe they're well-represented here as well tonight. But we noted that as part of the pavement management program, we don't reconstruct street segments and not install curb and gutter if there's not currently curb and gutter. A few of the reasons that we gave for that were, um, with the installation of the curb and gutter, it helps to create that barrier on the roadway, of not allowing for water to get into that new base that we're putting in, installing with the, the street reconstruction project, and causing the edges to deteriorate quicker or the pavement itself to deteriorate quicker.[1731.83] quicker. Some of these areas have good drainage the way it is without curb and gutter, but the installation of the curb and gutter really helps us to control that stormwater drainage and get it into our stormwater systems. And then also, the curb and gutter helps for maintenance techniques, our street sweeping and our snow plowing as well. And as I mentioned earlier, we also don't mill and overlay street segments that don't have curb and gutter just for the fact that it's not cost effective to put all those dollars into that pavement when we know we're probably going to be getting some underlying issues sooner, deterioration sooner than we would like to see. With that said, we also had a discussion with those property owners about, in the past, there's a few neighborhoods, like the Timberglade neighborhood is one example. That was a number of years ago, but where if a request came from the neighbors, we've looked at doing a different type of curb rather than our standard B618, which is, yeah, the straight six inch face on the curb and gutter, just the regular standard curb and gutter you'd see around town, but rather using a mountable or a ribbon curb, which is a little bit slower of a transition for the curb. That is something that we mentioned that we would entertain. We would, we'd like to send, if it's something that the council would desire, we'd like to send notices or surveys again to the entire neighborhood to know that that is the type of curb that the majority would like to see. But I know there was, we discussed this with the Orchard Springs folks, and I had also heard from an individual on Meadowview that would have interest in that, so we could look at pursuing that and surveying the entire street segment. And as I mentioned, I know there's a number of folks that are probably here to speak on those items that we discussed last week as well. Summary for the PMP, to implement the right action at the right time, prolonging our pavement life, reducing our overall cost of our street, our street maintenance, and helping to maintain our city's infrastructure. And we have the motion, recommended motion before you here tonight. I will also note that whatever streets are ordered tonight, prior to October 2024, before the special assessment public hearing, staff will determine the recommendations for the assessments. And then in October of 2024, there'll be that public hearing to order the assessment. So tonight is just for the ordering of the project, nothing related to the ordering of the special assessments. So with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Simons, Mr. Hanson, appreciate it. Good information as always. Council, questions on this? Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to ask, I know the last time we met on the Lyndale's Bluff areas, there was a conversation with that HOA or that group that was organized, and I wanted to get a, just from the public standpoint, a kind of a feedback in terms of what was discussed there and what was determined from that particular discussion. Because I know as a part of that, my understanding was that you had folks that were a part of that, that association that was a part of the conversation. Am I correct in that thinking? Could you, could you just give us a little update on that in terms of what the recommendations were and how that came out there? Because I'm getting a couple of, I've gotten, you know, one or two emails or so of folks who've got some problems, and I wanted to ask a couple of questions about those.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. So what you're referring to is when this Lyndale Avenue was considered with the 2021 PMP, I believe, and at that time, and as we do always with the initial estimated assessments, we just simply apply the assessment policy by taking the adjusted front footage multiplied by the rate and provide them that number. As you know, before, prior to the final assessment role being brought before you, we will look at the special benefit to confirm that whatever that final assessment amount is, that that is within the ranges of the special benefit they're receiving from the improvement that's being assessed. In the case of the Bluffs on Sans Pierre neighborhood, our current policy at the time didn't really have a good way of calculating adjust, or a estimated or an assessment that was in line with the benefit of properties like those would receive based on kind of the characteristics of that neighborhood. And we knew that, and we acknowledged that at the informational meeting and said these will need to be adjusted prior to the final assessment going out. And the neighborhood engaged staff and was hoping, wondering if there was a way that we could amend our policy to better align it with neighborhoods such as this. And that segment of Lyndale was actually taken off of that year's project. And then after that, we did have meetings with the residents there and kind of worked through some options, came back before council with some recommended revisions to the policy that would better address that neighborhood. I think we had three options. The neighbor, the neighborhood voted or kind of gave their sense on which one they preferred, went before council, made some recommendations, and actually amended the policy based on those conversations. So that new policy was applied to the assessments, estimated assessments that were provided to the Bluffs on Sans Pierre neighborhood this year, so.
Thanks for giving that background, because, well, that was a long time ago. I was looking at 2021. Wow, quite some time. And I bet the price of that's gone up quite a bit too, since then as well. So one of the other questions that they had was around this Ames construction money. That seems to be a big contention, that this idea that that road was, you know, messed up through the construction that was done through that. And there's a, there's a understanding, you know, widely, and I know when I door knocked, people were certainly saying that, that that, their belief is that that money should be wholly and solely committed to just that project. Why is that thinking, you know, off or is that thinking right? You know, help me understand why that all those dollars shouldn't be assessed to that particular project, especially since we're pulling it out and making it separate.
Sure. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. In that case, as Bob mentioned, we bid the project as a whole project, so we include all the segments, including the Lyndale Avenue segment, even though it's a separate project. We are assessing that and lumping that in, the surfacing improvement with that, with the other 12 segments that are being considered this evening. The reason in doing so is that we get a better cost for all the properties in Bloomington as opposed to just piecemealing it out. I can say that the Ames money was set aside until the Lyndale Avenue segment was part of an upcoming PMP project. So the 4.2 million, estimated 4.2 million cost for surfacing that I presented here this evening, that, the total cost of the improvement was minus that Ames money. So they are seeing, that was applied prior to us doing our calculations for the assessment. So along with that Ames construction money for the I-35W project, the bridge construction, we also did receive some state park fund account grant that was also applied for that. And that's for the connection down to the parking lot down at the end of the south terminus Lyndale Avenue as well.
Well, the Ames piece is being attributed to the entire, not just the Lyndale piece. And that's the piece that they're wanting to understand why not just Lyndale.
And that's because we don't, we don't set rates for each individual segment of the PMP project. We set a rate for the entire project, so we look at it as a whole. If we were to do, set rates for each individual segment, you know, first of all, the administration to do that, to be able to piece that out, would probably outweigh any benefits that one segment would receive from a lower cost for that. Secondly, it could, it could relate or could lead to wildly different assessment rates for each individual section depending on the type of construction needed. If you have really good soils and you don't need to do much correction, if you have few properties, you know, that cost is split out amongst, you know, 10 properties as opposed to the 400 or so properties that are part of this whole project. So the policy has always been to apply it to the entire project, bid the project as a whole, it gives us the most competitive prices and gives the lowest costs, the rates per foot that we can apply to all properties.
Kind of there's a benefit on both ends of the spectrum. So you get a little bit from this, you get a little bit from being part of the whole group. So the last question I have, Mayor, on this particular one, is there's this idea that something similar to this went to the Supreme Court in St. Paul, and there was a case where that, that assessment didn't work out in the Supreme Court, you know, sued and they were able to win. So is there any concern that the staff has at all with that similar, you know, anything happening like that in this particular case?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I'm aware of the St. Paul, that that's come up at previous meetings before. It's my understanding that in that case, the assessments were being applied to maintenance activities, they weren't to full improvements, whereas we're assessing for the reconstruction of these streets, I believe in the St. Paul case, and again, this is, don't quote me on this, but that it was applied to improvements and that is where they got into trouble. They couldn't show a special benefit. It was the routine maintenance of maintaining that infrastructure. Whereas in our assessments, we are applying it to brand new infrastructure and showing special benefit. And we do that through our special benefit analysis that we do prior to the assessment role being submitted. So every three years, we do a comprehensive special benefit analysis of the entire city to get an average special benefit for the PMP project for single-family homes. And then each year, we also do an addendum, and we include any non-single-family homes, residential, institutional, park space, open space, and also any unique single-family homes that may be up close to that threshold or, you know, are showing a calculated assessment that may be above what our average special benefit is. And in this year's project, we do have a handful of properties that are larger, you know, and are unique, that we, I know that we will be sending those to our special benefit counselor here in the, in the spring and the summer to have them look at those individually so that we're confident that whatever that calculated assessment is, that it is in line with the benefit, and if we need to adjust that, we would do so and bring that before the council prior to that final assessment role coming before you.
Thank you. I know we're not here for assessment. I know we've spent a lot of time on that, but I know there are folks that are going to ask that question. And I just want to just be, just be absolutely clear that when you got together, that, you know, that the recommendation that looked at like, that the neighbors that were part of the San Pierre area agreed with most of, most of them agreed with what the staff had put forward, and that's what we basically ended up doing. I know it's a long time ago, but just want to be sure that we're all clear about that.
And I would, I would point out one more thing, is that we did not do the special benefit analysis for the Bluffs on Sans Pierre neighborhood that last time because the segment got pulled. So even though that we've revised our assessment policy, the numbers they received are based on that new revised assessment policy, we will still do that special benefit analysis to see where those numbers fall in line. So if there's an adjustment needed, that'll come before you prior to that final assessment notice being sent out to those properties.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, I have a feeling we'll hear from some residents related to this specifically tonight, and there was some public comment submitted into the packet as well on this. But I, I want to ask this as more of a general question, because it sounds like, it sounds like there are certain properties within the city that are kind of double taxed, if you will, one, assessed, if you will. One for the front side of their, their property where they actually use the road, and the backside of the property where they don't use the road necessarily. Maybe they do, maybe they don't. But it's not, it's not considered frontage road, if you will, for their property because it's the backside of the property, right? I'm curious as to why our policy is to assess individuals in those circumstances when we're largely talking about feeder roads to like highway construction and other things like that, and therefore not really, not really anyone's particular fault and/or responsibility that that particular road or section of road has been, has been of 35W or 77 or something to that effect. What is our policy on that? And would this, would this for later, not tonight, but for later, I'd like us to maybe reconsider that being our policy, that if you happen to have a house and the backside of your house also has a road on it and there isn't anybody to assess, well, that's too bad for you, we have to assess you. Like, that doesn't feel good to me, and I'd like us to think about that. But more or less, to get that started, I'd like to at least understand what the policy's about and where it came from and why you do it in those circumstances.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. I believe what you're referring to is maybe the Colfax Avenue, West Bloomington Freeway segment of this year's project.
In this particular case.
Yep, absolutely.
I know that there are others throughout the city.
Exactly. So again, the basis for our special assessments are, is that adjusted front footage, and that's where it comes into play right here. So the adjusted front footage is a function of the area of the lot, and then if the area of the lot is such that a second frontage can be calculated, it will be. For the purposes of the segments on this year on, between Colfax and West Bloomington Freeway, there are two properties at the very north end, just south of a hunreth, that actually exceed, are large enough in area that they have a second frontage. So they have an AFF1 and an AFF2. Our policy says that when we assess, we use AFF1. The next time we would come through for an accessible project, we'd use AFF2 and go back and forth, back and forth. The remaining properties on that stretch only have one frontage based on their area. So the last time any of those properties were assessed for a street improvement was in 1970, I believe. So per our policy, they are subject to an assessment again when a street that they front, is they have a frontage that's subject to an assessment, comes up, they're subject to an assessment for that street, regardless of what side of the street they access. If their property touches a frontage and they have an AFF that is accessible, that's what we would apply. Now, in this case, West Bloomington Freeway is the segment being considered tonight. If in 10 years, let's say, we came back and reconstructed Colfax Avenue on the opposite side, obviously, West Bloomington Freeway would not be at the end of its useful life after 10 years, or I hope not, based on our policy, right? So at that point then, the properties, if they only had one frontage, which is the majority of them besides those top, those northern two, they would not be subject to an assessment for the Colfax Avenue again. So the next time West Bloomington Freeway came by, if that was the next project, then at that point, they would be subject to an assessment again. So to your question about being double assessed, they're not being double assessed. The only ones that are being double assessed are ones that have two frontages. And the second frontage for both of those properties that I'm referring to is very small because it's almost, it's just beyond our threshold. So the second assessment, when they're in that AFF2, as I call it, it's pretty, it's very low. It's like, I think one was like an AFF of two and one was an AFF of one, so.
Okay, so what you're, if I can sum that up then, what you're saying is, the assessment on the frontage is done because the project is coming up, but, but there would not be, I mean, how much time would have to go by before the assessment for Colfax would also hit these properties?
Right. The policy is at the end of the road's useful life. So if you were assessed for a road, and like I said, 10 years, West Bloomington Freeway would not be at the end of its useful life, so we would not look at the, we would not, they would not be considered for an assessment. If you get close to 40 or 50, that's where we have to have a conversation and make that decision. Typically, it's pretty, it's cut and dry as far as, you know, we've been through there, it's been 50 years, they're subject to an assessment again, or potential assessment. If it were to come back in that 35 to 40 to 45 range, then we'd probably have to have a conversation with staff and determine how we want to move forward with that.
Okay.
And if I could, Councilmember DeLisandro, this is similar to corner lots, is that correct?
That's correct.
So on corners, if, you can explain it much better than I, why don't you do that?
No, so, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on a corner lot as well, even if you front two streets, let's say, you have, you have two actual frontages, if you were to go out there, you have two frontages. Again, AFF is based on, it's a, it's a function of the area. So if a corner lot, which we do have some that are, is, the area is such that it doesn't calculate to a second AFF, they would only have one AFF in the adjusted front footage world, whereas the actual frontage would be two. So again, in that same scenario, if they, if the one street was reconstructed, they were assessed, in 10 years, if the opposite street that they're fronting was reconstructed, if they only had one AFF based on their area and their calculation, they would not be subject to an assessment for that second street.
That, that makes sense to me, and I understand, I'm assuming that those front, those two northern area, area ones are kind of in that boat, and they kind of act like corner lots essentially, which makes sense. In this particular case, this is a freeway frontage road. It's, you know, I wouldn't, I don't think of it as the same as neighborhood roads where you have, you're probably turning right or left on your corner lot, et cetera, et cetera. There's no access by these buildings to any of that road. In fact, and it doesn't serve their neighborhood, it actually is a bypass to their neighborhood. And so it's a little bit different. Having said that, if what you're saying is, based on that, they're still only being assessed for one road, it just happens to be in this particular case because of the timing, that it's the backside of the road, or the backside, the back road, the road on the back of their house, and if, and if Colfax comes up in the next 30 years, the likelihood that they'll be assessed for that is very low because it's falling into that category. Do I have that right?
That is correct, yes, that is correct. And I would, I would add one more thing. If there is, if we do have non-access easements across, so if there was something in place that would not allow access onto West Bloomington Freeway, which we do not have in place currently, we would look at that differently as well. So if you have no access and cannot access that, that does come into play when we look at our adjusted front footages.
Yeah, and that, and that might be worth taking a look at down the road in this particular circumstance because it's essentially storm drainage. It's not, it's not used and or accessed by anyone, and it doesn't have like a bicycle trail, it doesn't have anything, you know, it doesn't even have a sidewalk or anything like that. So might be worth looking at that as a future thing. Great, thank you, appreciate the help.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Lohman.
I'll ask one last one here about the curb and gutter piece. As we've mentioned, you know, as long as I've been here, we've never done it where we have not put in the curb and gutter. You know, I know we had that other, other option. And so I just want to be sure that there isn't any other case where we can think of where this council has decided to not put a curb and gutter. I know one of the arguments for it is this idea of, you know, and I've been in these areas many a times, you know, kind of that natural feel and trying to kind of preserve that, you know, for the area. You know, other than this, this alternative option that's out there, has there been anything done from the city that you can remember of where we didn't put that curb and gutter?
Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, no, not that I can remember. Typically, if the, if the decision was not, that they didn't want, didn't want curb and gutter installed, and we didn't go with a different option of curb and gutter, then that segment just got pulled from that, and that's happened, of course. That's, it's gotten pulled from the project. But the only ones that I can remember are ones where we just did a different type of curb and gutter, and some of those more unique areas like some of these roadways where we went with more of like a mountable curb and gutter or ribbon curb.
And so for those ones that they ended up getting pulled, I imagine at some point they came back, right, that we had to, had to do those. And I always, you know, I like to caution folks, you know, from, from doing that, you know, when you pull them out and you bring it back, the cost, I'm sure, increased, and I know we don't have an example right here, but it can be quite substantial in this environment in terms of what we're paying for those materials. Um, I don't know if you've got an example, it's off the top of your head, in terms of, of something like that, where we've done that, where we've pulled it out and then had to bring it back, because, you know, I mean, that's what the option's going to be, you don't, you don't do it, and then you wait till later on to put it back in there.
We did have, uh, Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, we'd have had one, a few of them in the past, but one of them that comes to mind was on a stretch of Tenth Avenue where the segment, um, there was strong opposition to doing the work when we came through, um, it was pulled from the project. Um, and actually, the, some of the neighbors in that, in that area, a few years down the road, came back to Public Works and asked, can we please have our, our roadway done at this time, just because it's, it's in need of, in need of some work? And we've mentioned to the folks that, that do bring this up as well, that um, with the condition that some of these streets are getting into, it's not cost-effective for us to be doing a lot of ma- maintenance work other than minimal maintenance to those roadways at this point. So, it'd be the typical pothole patching and things of that sort to get it by moving forward. And then when we've known that there's been strong opposition to doing a neighborhood, we typically won't come back for a number of years just because we have other segments that we're going to be moving on to, so.
Counsel, anything additional? I'll just uh, ask one clarifying point, and I appreciate the slide that you showed where uh, comparing cities and the percentage that homeowners and the frontage and, and so on, and Bloomington is at twenty-five percent. Uh, it's important to point out where that other seventy-five percent comes from. That uh, the, the property owner is assessed the twenty-five percent, and the seventy-five percent is then spread across the rest of the city of Bloomington. So, um, we, we, we saw that chart, and it ranges everywhere from twenty-five up to sixty-some odd percent, I think. And uh, Bloomington, I think, at the twenty-five percent is on the low end. Uh, I didn't see a whole lot that were lower than that. Uh, and now that Edine is transitioning, we don't have, we can't use them as the example, they were literally one hundred percent within the past couple of years and uh, to the, to the assessed property owners. So, I, I think that's just important to point out, that that additional seventy-five percent is spread across the rest of the city of Bloomington. All right, Counsel, anything else? If not, let's open up the council, or, let's open up the public hearing on this. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Stick around. Uh, we're going to open up the public hearing on item four, five, four point one, and I know there's a lot of folks here who are interested in this. What we're going to do is try and put a little structure around this, and uh, if, I don't know if you saw, in the packet, we have the different segments of, of streets broken down into thirteen different streets. And what I'm going to do is call them one by one, and if you're here to talk about that specific segment, if you could just give me a raise of the hand, so we know we want to pull that one out, and we're going to, we're going to have an open public hearing on that. Uh, and then we won't, tho- those sections that don't have somebody here, we just, we'll, we'll move on, we'll put them into the package and, and move forward with those. Uh, so, uh, I will ask here, I'm going to go right through numbers one through thirteen. We've got uh, project number one, the street name is Overlook Drive from France Avenue to the East Terminus. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to project one? All right, thank you. Project two is Penn Circle, and it's from Penn Avenue to the East Terminus. Anyone here wishing to speak to, reference uh, project number two? All right. Project number three is West One Hundredth Street from Fremont Avenue to West Bloomington Freeway. Anyone? Very good, thank you. Project four, Emerson Avenue, West One Hundredth Street to the North Terminus. Very good. Number five is the West Bloomington Freeway, West One Hundred and Second Street to West One Hundredth Street. All right, very good, thank you for raising your hand. We'll get back to you. Item six here, Lyndale Avenue from West One Hundred and Sixth Street to the South Terminus. All right. Project seven, Oakland Avenue, East eighty, East Ninety-sixth Street to East Ninety-fifth Street. Anyone? All right. Project eight, Orchard Springs Road, Sixteenth Avenue to the East Terminus. Anyone? Very good, thank you. Project nine, Meadowview Road, from Old Cedar Avenue to East Old Chocopee Road. Project ten, West Eighty-fourth and a Half Street from Emerson Avenue to Dupont Avenue. Project eleven, West Eighty-fourth Street from Dupont Avenue to Aldrich Avenue. Project twelve, Dupont Avenue, West Eighty-fourth and a Half Street to West Eighty-second Street. And project thirteen, Colfax Avenue, West Eighty-fourth Street to West Eighty-second Street. All right. So, for the record, we have people who would like to speak for project number five and project number eight, which means uh, projects one through four, six and seven, and then nine through thirteen. Last call for that, otherwise, we're going to roll those into the package and, and try to move forward with those. Very good.
Mr. Mayor, I thought I heard, I saw hands up for number nine. Can you read it again? I apologize.
Number nine, um, maybe I missed it, Meadowview Road, Old Cedar Avenue to East Old Chocopee Road?
That's on me, sorry.
We're good? Did I miss somebody, or are we good? Okay, we're good. All right. So, we will uh, let's open up this, uh, we'll start with number five here, which is uh, West Bloomington Freeway, West One Hundred and Second Street to West One Hundredth Street. So, if you're interested in speaking on this, if you could please come up, uh, and if you're also interested, if you could kind of queue up in behind. The way this works in our public hearings, our shot clock is up on the wall, you'll have five total minutes, and uh, we're going to stick to that to make sure everybody gets the same total amount of time. And if you could, begin by identifying yourself, and then as you're done, the, the sheet with the, on the clipboard there, if you could just sign in so we have you officially. You can do that when you're done, you don't have to do that while you're, while you're standing there, uh, getting ready to speak. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
And if you could speak into the microphone too, so we make sure we get you.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Larry King, K-I-N-G. I live at one oh-one oh-seven Colfax Avenue South. I'm one of the people that received the assessment letter from the city, and now that I've heard what the councilperson had to say about it, and the fact that we'd back in a year to readdress this issue of the estimates, um, I'm going to be very brief. Um, they, you hit the nail on the head. Our property faces Colfax, we live on Colfax, that's our mailing address, and everything comes in from there, the sewer water and so forth. And behind us, our property backs up to the ditch for the service road. And it is a ditch, a water runoff, and it's nothing else. But what's unique about the road, if some of you, I assume, have driven that road, many of you may not have ever been on that road, but it's really three different sections. It's, it's, the first section is ninety-six to uh, One Hundredth, or Ninety-eighth to One Hundredth, and that's Lifetime Fitness, Minnesota Eye, and the access road for the carpool lane, South Thirty-five W. And it's, basically, it's commercial, there's no homes there, and it's heavily used. Then at a Hundredth to a Hundred and Second, there is nothing. It's essentially, from my perspective, it's a two-lane alley or private drive that nobody can use except the people basically south of us. People live in Devonshire, in the townhomes south of them, now that the cul-de-sac's in at a Hundred and Sixth, that's just the way everybody goes, and for us, there's just no purpose to it at all. We can't access it, we can't get to our homes from it, we can't drive there, we don't, certainly don't send our kids out to play on the service road. They go out on Colfax and ride their bikes and so forth. So, it, you know, even the corner lots face Colfax. So, for us to be taxed, like you say, essentially twice, we're paying our tax for the front, which we understand, but to be taxed again from the backside for a road we literally don't use, we don't drive on it, we can't access it for any reason really, I mean, I could purposely drive around to go to my home, but that would be it. Um, so, there's really, to be taxed is kind of a slap in the face. If you're going to do curb work and put new lights in on Colfax, we're on the hook. Come and see us, and we'll pay our tax for that. That's an improvement to our property. Basically, anything you do to the service road, you could pave it with gold, and it's not going to do anything for our property on Colfax. It's, it's essentially, it's a service road for the folks that live south of there. And all of those folks live on it, we don't live on that service road, they do. There are driveways, there are parking lots, they can come and go from there, and they need that access. We don't. So, I'm hard pressed, and there's eight of my neighbors here who are homeowners on Colfax who feel the same way. This is a very unfair way to tax us for something we literally don't use. And so, that's why I'm here, but now that I have a better understanding and having listened to everybody, curious, we have to come back in a year and discuss this again because it's an estimate. What we looked at is an estimate from you, and now they're going to do it again next fall. So, not sure where this is going to go, if you're going to vote on this tonight or make a decision, I'm not really sure.
What we will do, uh, what, what we're considering tonight is to approve the feasibility study and to order the street reconstruction project. So, basically, put the process in motion. And um, and, and the coming back in a year, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm unclear as to exactly that, that thought. I mean, in a year, as the cycle goes, Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I believe uh, what the resident is speaking to is this, the special assessment hearing for the, yeah, for the actual levying of the special assessment.
Got it.
We'll be back if the project's ordered and a special assessment is considered, we'll be back before it.
Understood, okay, sorry.
Just another note to the side, the thirty-year thing really, I mean, I'll be out in Dawn Memorial Park before thirty years comes and goes. Seriously, I'm not waiting for you to repave it again and look to cash in on that, so, I think we have to live in the here and now, and the current years surrounding this, and the reality is, you know, while we live here and own those homes, we don't use a road that you'd like us to pay for, essentially a private driveway is how we view it, but that's our position. So, uh, I think there's eight other homeowners here, I don't know if they want to speak too, but I think we kind of, I brought this up with them and got a consensus of what our thoughts and feelings are on it, and I don't know if they want to speak or not, but I think we've kind of hit, hit what we wanted to talk about.
Very good, thank you, Mr. King. If I could remind you to, to, to sign in there.
Sure.
Uh, I will ask, are there neighbors here, are you in agreement with Mr. King with what he said? If you can, kind of, okay, very good, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this specifically?
Yeah, my name's Robert Hanson. Uh, I live on, on the Colfax, on the north, northern part of the Colfax. And my concerns or question would be is, I believe it was going back seven, eight years ago, they were thinking about putting a light rail through Thirty-five W, which expansioned, and at one point, they were talking about taking that whole fringe road out. If they would do that, and we have a ten-year assessment or payment, they take that out, does that, what does that do? Are we still paying taxes on a road that's not there anymore? You follow, you follow what I'm saying?
I, I do, I do follow what you're saying, uh, with, and-
If, if they come through with a light rail, and they have to take out that strip of road, now these residents are paying for a road tax or a road improvement tax that is no longer there.
I, I understand what you're saying. I have not heard a discussion of light rail on Thirty-five W in a long time, in at least a decade. I, I think they've, I think that ship has sailed, to be honest. I think they're focusing on uh, bus rapid transit in the three, the Thirty-five W corridor right now, and I don't think that light rail is, uh, who's our representative of the Thirty-five W corridor alliance?
Yeah, no, I have not heard that at all. I was just shaking my head, saying, hey, no, I've not heard that at all.
I don't believe that's under consideration at this point, so.
All right.
All right, but, but good point, I, I appreciate your, your, your point.
Mayor, if I, if I might just add, um, slightly north of there, not too far, we just got property back-
That's true, yes.
Um, from right-of-way acquisition that, that we're redeveloping to add housing in, so.
Yep, yep, that is true as well. Anyone else wishing to speak uh, on project number five? Very good, uh, we will move on to project number eight, the Orchard Springs Road, Sixteenth Avenue to the East Terminus. Same deal with you folks, uh, if somebody would like to come forward. And again, don't, don't forget to sign in after you're, you're done speaking, and please identify yourself for the record.
Yeah, Alan Bedenski, one-six-three-six Orchard Springs Road. I've lived in Bloomington for fifty-seven years and on Orchard Springs Road for thirty-six years. I'm strongly opposed to the, the proposed curb and gutter on our street. This has been mentioned here throughout discussion here for this meeting, but I'm just going to go ahead and read what I've got here. Um, this is a unique area to Bloomington with a country feel, and we'd like to preserve that. Our street provides access to only eleven houses, and it's a dead-end street. Um, the street is just over eight hundred feet long. Uh, there are still homes in Bloomington with driveways as long as our street, if not longer than. Um, over fifty percent of the homes are accessed in the first half of the street, and the last three homes are accessed within the last one-third of the street. My point here is that it gets minimal traffic, and our street, and we can't justify the cost of the curb and gutter on our long driveway. Currently, the road was constructed in nineteen eighty-two as a three-ton road. It's being proposed to reconstruct as a seven-ton road with curb and gutter. It's lasted us forty-one years with the inconsistent maintenance schedule. Um, only once has it been seal-coated on the every seven-year basis per the PMP, and other times, it's been up to ten years between the seal coating. Many years, we have not been provided with the spring patching on the potholes, and um, most of the deterioration is within the interior of the street and not the perimeter. So, therefore, the curb and gutter would not have really provided us any benefit to date for the longer longevity. PMP states that a reconstruct would occur in twenty years without the routine maintenance, and here we are going on about forty-one years. My point here is that we have not been getting our tax dollars worth to maintain our street, and now we're going to be hit with these big assessments. It's being proposed an all or nothing, uh, with a full reconstruct, again with curb and gutter. Not always are city policies and standards appropriate for all the streets. Why the blanket policy of one size fits all? We would like to suggest that the street warrants an option for the mill and overlay without the curb and gutter. I know Bob and Brian told us last week that that's not really an option, but uh, there again, why the blanket policy? Perform core samples to test and see what the composition of the subgrade, subbase, and asphalt is. Um, it just may be suitable for a seven-ton road with the appropriate asphalt thickness, possibly minimal subgrade and some base, subbase corrections. There are thousands of miles of roads in Minnesota that are paved and do not have curb and gutter, and they have heavy traffic on them daily, and they last many, many years. We want to take the right action at the right time, and our long driveway will be just fine without the curb and gutter. I appreciate you listening to our concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to item eight here, or project eight?
My concern is slightly different. Uh, I'm Ellen Aronson, and I live at the East Terminus of Orchard Springs Road. I care for my ninety-three-year-old mother, and I'm hoping you can find it in your hearts to take no action on reconstruction plans for Orchard Springs Road at this time. Please, don't remove us from the PMP plan, we want, we don't want to be forced out of the program. But, sorry. If you could just simply defer action for one year, just, I'm asking for one year. Construction at this time will be detrimental to the end stages of my mother's life. I ask that you allow time for a peaceful ending. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, you can come up and you can, you can use the, the left microphone if you could.
Um, my name is Roger Johnson. I um, live at sixteen oh-one Orchard Springs Road. Uh, I'm a relative, um, newcomer from, uh, New England here. Um, I'm not going to repeat, uh, the consensus among the neighbors is that uh, we would not like uh, curb and gutter, and we'd like to go with uh, option C. Um, so I won't go over everything that Al went over, we've, we've pretty much communicated uh, as neighbors about this. Uh, I wanted to add that uh, I came into the neighborhood through uh, patrolling areas as a law enforcement officer with Henry County, um, doing house arrest for pro- probation. And uh, when I moved into the area, I thought it was a collective, you know, uh, charismatic, uh, unique, um, semi-rural area, and I felt fortunate to be able to uh, buy a home in that area. And now, uh, the proposal seems like it would uh, diminish uh, the aesthetics to that neighborhood. So, I understand a lot of the technical issues that um, Al brought up, we all understand those issues, but I didn't want to say that we don't want to lose the aesthetics to that. So, uh, thank you for listening, and that's um, um, why I would uh, kind of decline the proposal if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, thank you. My name is Tim O'Keefe, I'm at sixteen twenty-one Orchard Springs Road. And uh, I am also not going to rehash a lot of the issues that uh, that Alan Roger have. Um, we're all pretty much aligned. Um, I'm a longtime resident of uh, Bloomington along with my wife and family. We moved to Bloomington in eighty-seven, specifically on Orchard Springs Road in ninety-seven. And uh, like the others have said, it's, it's the charm, it's uniqueness of that road. It's not just a road, it's a community. I've got some great neighbors. And when we moved in, it was a twenty-eight-foot wide road, um, no curbs, it's like that today. It's the same road today as it was when I moved in. It's held up pretty well, as, as Al had pointed out. And it has had minimum maintenance. I don't know if, if you all know, but when the snowplow does come by, it's usually a pickup truck that comes and does our road. So I mean, it gets very little travel. It's, it's the neighbors, it's their visitors, it's the mail carriers, the package delivery folks, and someone who may be lost. And we don't get a lot of traffic. But as others have stated, I'm fine with having the, the road improved, but opposed to the curb and gutters, because that really, really takes away from the aesthetics and just the, the special character of that road. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Strand. My parents' home is the eighteen-hundred Orchard Springs Road. They're on the dead end of our Orchard Springs Road. I grew up there. It is a very unique place, and like our neighbors have said, it would ruin what is there now. It is very little-traveled, and like they said, unless you are lost, you're not on our road. We would like to keep the maintenance, and this all-or-nothing of either you get the curb and gutter, or we're not gonna see you for ten years, I think is unfair, like one of my neighbors has said as well. I hope that we can consider repaving and resurfacing as an option if it is a consensus with all the neighbors. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I think I saw somebody else moving. Yes, please, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Lorraine Bedenski. I live at sixteen thirty-six Orchard Springs Road. I have lived on Orchard Springs Road thirty-six of the fifty-one years I've been in Bloomington, and I too am opposed to the addition of curb and gutter on our street. One thing I don't quite understand, at the meeting last Monday, it seems the city is promoting curb and gutter as such a great benefit to us homeowners, in that it will increase our property values. Well, as we all know, increased property values means increased property taxes. So between that and the huge assessments we're being hit with, I don't see how that is a benefit. It's double-dipping if we end up having our taxes raised and having to pay these huge assessments. Resitters I spoke with said having curb or not is not taken into consideration when doing comps in an area when selling a home, and has no bearing on the value of the property. So curb has nothing to do with curb appeal, in my mind. They also said lack of curb is an attraction to an area, as it gives a more natural, quaint vibe to a neighborhood, as my other neighbors have kind of said also. And isn't Bloomington trying to be more nature-oriented? We were also told at the meeting, the city can't reconstruct the road without curb and gutter. Is it truly that they can't do it, or won't? I would certainly think exceptions could be made based on each individual neighborhood's unique situations. I am asking that the road be updated without curb and gutter in order to maintain the sought-after, country-within-the-city aesthetic that Orchard Springs Road provides. Appreciate your time spent listening, and hope our wishes are taken into serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Oh, we need you to sign in, yes, thanks. Thanks for helping with the reminder. Mr. Sable, is there anyone on the phone who wishes to speak?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there's no one else on the line.
Thank you. Last call for anybody in the chambers. Council, we've got no one on the phone, we've got no one on the chambers coming forward. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four-point-one this evening.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah, to close the public hearing on item four-point-one. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six-zero, closing the public hearing on item six-point-one. A couple of questions, I think that were, were brought up, and if Mr. Simms, Mr. Hanson could come forward, there, there was questions about, actually, some, some clarifications. I, I heard that there was deterioration from the inside out, and the, the notion being that perhaps the curb and gutter wasn't necessary because there was no deterioration on the side. Is the deterioration in the middle the result of not having basically the book, the bookends to, to hold the, the road in place, or am I misinterpreting that?
Uh, Mayor, that, that could be the case, that there is on Orchard Springs Road, there is deterioration on the edges of the roadway as well. The deterioration in the middle of the roadway could be from existing base conditions in the roadway, soils in the area that would need to be corrected if we came through and did a, a street reconstruction project. Does that answer your question?
It, it does, I think. There was also the suggestion to do testing to figure out what the, the substrate was, and to figure out what's underneath there, and if it was possible. Has that testing been done? Do you know what's down there? Do you know what the, the, the capacity of that road is, or should be?
Uh, Mayor and Council, for, the, the comment was made about the, the three-ton roadway when it was initially installed. Majority of our, our local residential roadways, lower-volume roadways, were, were built to a three-ton standard. Typically, when we come in and do these reconstruction projects, or PMP projects, we'll take borings of the existing asphalt thickness, as well as the material, maybe six inches or so of the material underneath, so we can get an idea of what we're working with. But with that said, the majority of these segments were built to a three-ton standard, some of them on better soils than others, so they have an extended lifespan, like Orchard Springs Road, for example, an extended lifespan from others. When we come through with a street reconstruction project, it's, as it was mentioned, it, it's reconstructed to a seven-ton standard to withhold the garbage trucks and the other ma- maintenance equipment that comes into the area. Like the, the folks said, it's minimal, it's minimal equipment that comes into the area, but the standard that it's built to is seven tons, so that we can build it for the future. Maybe a little more information than you were looking for.
No, I think, I appreciate that, that's good. There's questions about this, this notion of a one-size-fits-all type of policy in place. Can you explain, again, maybe, and help the council understand a little bit better, why then, why this idea of if there is work done, we need to put in curb and gutter in areas that don't have curb and gutter?
Uh, Mayor and Council, as a few of the, the notes that I had mentioned earlier on, when we're, when we're putting this amount of dollars and this amount of time into maintaining a roadway, whether it's to mill and overlay the roadway, or reconstruct the roadway, and with the, the installation of this curb and gutter provides that barrier to the roadway, so we can keep the water and, well, basically, the water and, from getting underneath into our new base layer that we'd be installing, and deteriorating that roadway faster. Some areas like Orchard Springs, maybe it'll take longer than others for that to occur, but it's something that's gonna occur quicker than if we would be installing a curb and gutter on the edges of the roadway.
Uh, and so if, I mean, you say if we don't, without the curb and gutter, basically, it's, the investments that the city would make don't hold as long. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So it's, it's not as, is not as effective stewardship of, of public dollars if we would do something like that, so, okay.
Correct.
Council, do we have any questions? I, I think I covered, oh, and, and then the, the notion of a, of deferring action for one year. Have we, has that been considered in the past? Either Mr. Simms or Mr. Verbrugge?
Um, question being, if, if we've delayed it for one year. In the past, I can't, I can't recall areas that we've specifically delayed for one year. Typically, if, if the, it's, it's agreed upon by most of the neighborhood that they don't want the work to be done at this time, typically, it would come back a few years down the road. I can't remember an instance where we've come back one year, maybe Julie can, but...
I bet Julie can, because she's just jumped right up.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm older than Bob, so I do remember a little things. We have delayed a couple different road segments. They've both been two years, and it's usually when we have a church or a religious organization on the road, and so they want additional time to acquire the funds to pay off the assessments, so we have done that in the past.
Thank you. Thanks for the perspective. I saw a couple of hands go up. Councilmember, Councilmember Nelson, then Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Nelson.
Not sure that was a good choice, but, okay. So, a couple of questions. In terms of the, the one-year delay, I forget who requested that, but I wasn't sure if that was due to the construction or the financial aspect of it, because the, the financial aspect wouldn't occur for a year. Is that accurate? We wouldn't assess this, and then it wouldn't be due until...
That's correct. I think the first time it would be, would be May of twenty-five, was that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, May of twenty-five is the first time financially it would come forward.
Okay, because I am sympathetic to, obviously, a, a mother that's in ill health. I think we, we all would be. One of the questions about this was, why could it not be considered as a private drive? And if you look just to the south of that, there is, what appears, at least on the map, to be a private drive. It's not labeled as a street. Is, is there an option to essentially just sell the road to the neighborhood and have them take over maintenance of it, and do what they want with it, and make, and essentially turn it into a private drive, just as it is to the north of them?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I believe there would be that option to do so. It would completely turn the rights over to, to the neighbors in the area when it comes to any sort of maintenance, plowing, sweeping, anything of that sort. It's, it's a process. I'm not as in tune as, as some others are in that regard, but...
I mean, I, I assume it's a process. I assume it's also a significant expense. I mean, it's...
Correct, correct.
It's land, it would be, I mean, I, you know, I don't mean to speculate, but I assume it's more than just getting a new road, you know, so, but I just wanted to see if that was an option, and if they were still here, if they wanted to pursue that option. I don't know if that would be something to look into. One of the other questions that came up was in terms of the maintenance, and they indicated that in forty years, it had been seal-coated one time. Can you give us a, a sense of, of what has been done in terms of maintenance on that road, and if it has differed from other places in our normal maintenance program? Why?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, the, the, this segment of Orchard Springs is actually very similar to other segments on the, with, within Bloomington that don't have existing curb and gutter as part of the program, as that individual mentioned, the property owner mentioned, it was built in nineteen eighty-two. Since then, it was seal-coated in nineteen ninety, ninety-seven, two thousand seven, and two thousand sixteen. Typically, we reseal coat every eight to ten years, sometimes it stretches out a little bit longer than that, but this segment has been seal-coated about every eight to ten years since its, since its construction. Beyond that, it would see its, its typical pothole patching in the area, maybe some crack sealing before the seal coat, but there has been seal coats, like I said, every eight to ten years since its construction in eighty-two.
Okay. Quick follow-up on that. So then, with the seal coating, with the maintenance that we have been doing, this road has still deteriorated, that it needs to be essentially replaced at this point. And the reason I bring that up is because residents throughout the city pay seventy-five percent of that. And would it be the case that if we put the curb and gutter in, it would last longer, and all residents throughout the city would realize a savings of doing the road with curb and gutter, with the seven-ton road, with all of that type of stuff, if the previous road had not been maybe up to what it should have been?
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, that is correct. The, with this reconstruction, as, as was shown, it would, it would extensively increase the life of the pavement in the area, not having to do those seal coats as often, that other maintenance work as often, with that, with that full street reconstruction being done. As I mentioned, there's a, a number of other roadways in Bloomington that, that we haven't gotten around to with the pavement management program, that yet were, that were billed, built with a three-ton standard, or a three-ton roadway. When we come through, it's built to that seven ton, so that we're not having to come back as often and spend as many tax dollars to, to maintain that roadway.
Thank you. If I might just, one more question?
Go ahead.
I'd like to shift gears over to the COFAX, because I understand, before we actually get to the assessment, there's a review of a special assessment, and how might that play out, given that this is essentially the backyard? Would it potentially be that the special assessment review would say, oh, there's no, or the special benefit test, there's no benefit to this because it's not their front row? And I'd also point out that there is apparently one driveway at one zero one one nine, according to a map on the Google, so...
Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, that is correct. And, and that is what that special benefit analysis would do, and that's why we do have that third-party independent property evaluator do that work for us. So we're not making that decision, we're having someone else do that analysis that's qualified in that and certified, and can provide that documentation for us, so that we move forward and, and send out those final assessment notices that we're confident, comfortable, and confident in the number that we're providing, that the benefit they're receiving from that work is requisite of the assessment they're being received. So if that, if that came back, and, and they determined that there was a, you know, the benefit was less because of the conditions that you, 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 you specified, then that's what the assessment would show, the final assessment, that would reflect that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, just on that point that Councilmember Nelson made about the one driveway onto COFAX, if you go into the street view, you'll see there's not a curb cut for that concrete, and it ends at the fence that is there, and it doesn't appear that the fence opens for the driveway. So I haven't driven it myself, I did the same thing you did, I looked at the street view, so I don't think it's an actual functioning driveway currently. Yep. Yeah, the other, okay.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor, and, Councilmember Nelson, thank you. Took some of my questions I had there, but, yeah, you're doing well. Well, you warned me, so... So let's just start with COFAX where you left off. So has there been any history where the city has taken a area just out, and just said, you know what, we're gonna have a, have a deeper look at that, that COFAX thing that's similar to, I know we've done it before, we've pulled a section out for, you know, the neighborhood didn't want to do the roads at all, but, you know, given what we're looking at, that COFAX there, is there any precedent at all? Is any other council before just said, hey, you know what, this is kind of strange? I mean, because that is very unique.
Mayor, Councilmember Loman, are you, are you referring to taking it out of the assessment, or just taking it out of the project?
Yeah, taking it out of the project, just completely, and just saying, hey, you know, I know, because I, I think the Councilman DelaSandra may have a good point here, and I don't know if I, I, how comfortable I feel, given the way that that is arranged and set up. I don't know, it just doesn't, to me, it doesn't fit the mustard, you know, in terms of what we're trying to do here. I just, I, I can't make that make sense. So I just want to know if we went down that route, and we pulled that out. I know there's an impact to that, and I'm very reluctant to ever want to pull anything out of, you know, because that, there's an impact to the rest of the taxpayers as we get ready to do that. But is there anything similar to that, where we've done that before, and we said, hey, we're gonna pull this thing out, and then, you know, just take this out, and just, we're gonna have a, have a deeper look at that?
Ms. Long, or Ms., Mr.?
I have a different example. I, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, I thought your question was going a different direction. So northward ridge over on the west side of town also has a bunch of throughlots, and they were concerned about being assessed. And in our policy already is a clause that if you have a non-access easement, you would not be assessed for that throughlot parcel, so you'd only be assessed on that front side. So if you wanted to direct staff to work with the property owners along COFAX to set up that easement, the non-access easement, we would be happy to do that. Now, that would require some work from the property owners, because depending if they have mortgage, mortgages, they may need mortgage consent, and so, because it is a legal document that is filed with Hennessy County, it's not a slam-dunk, easy process, but it would be a way to keep the road in the project and put the AFF one on COFAX, and AFF two would be eliminated, with the exception, as Mr. Hanson indicated, those two northerly properties.
I kind of...
But if they filed this non-access easement, that could go away as well.
Okay, I like that. I mean, I, I think that's, because I just, I don't feel, that, that one there is, is something unique to me. Thank you. I don't, I'll see if my colleagues agree or disagree on that one, but that, that's the direction I'm in. So then, my other question, you know, I think it was a good question, that, there's several really good questions from the, from the neighborhood there. You know, and, and we've dealt with this, this, this country kind of feel before, and I'm not unsympathetic to that, you know, I've got a number of people in my family, my wife grew up in a country area, and I know how nice that is to, to live in that area. So is it the policy of this, of this council and of staff that we, we can't do anything, anything other than curb and gutter? I just want to just get that clear, in terms of what we've got out there.
Mayor, Councilmember Loman, yes, that currently is the policy, that if we are gonna reconstruct a roadway, that we will install curb and gutter with that, with that work.
Okay, so now we're clear about that, and that's, you know, certainly something our, this body, you know, can, can do or decide. And so, in terms of a, of a private road designation, that was the other, other route that I was gonna go down. You know, what would that entail? Obviously, it would take them out of this.
You know, what would that entail? Obviously, it would take them out of this, out of this piece here. And I know that, that can be quite expensive to go down that route. And if, if folks want to preserve that, that country feel, what is it, what does that cost for that? You know, if you could, you know, estimate, I want, I don't want to be careful, you know, asking to do something, you know, from a, but give a kind of perspective of how that would work. And, and I know that that has some implications as well in terms of what, you know, what can and can't happen with that road. Then I think snowplow and that type of stuff is then designated to that area. They have to take care of that. What other things are, are part of that, if, if that's the route? Because, you know, obviously, we have, you know, we're not in a policymaking standpoint right here. You know, we already have a policy. And so this might be a third route to kind of go if we were to pull this, this, this group out.
Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, as you mentioned, the, in regards to the maintenance, that it would fully become the property owners or that, that blocks responsibility to do so. In regards to cost, I'm not sure if there's anybody else present that has, that has an idea. I'm not sure what the cost of something like that would be. Overall, maintenance over number of years, I'm sure would be considerable in regards to the cost for those adjacent property owners. Beyond that, I'm not, I'm not sure what that, what that.
And, and Mr. Simons, I wouldn't expect you to speculate, so.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, no, that totally is, totally shouldn't be done. Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for calling me out on that. I shouldn't, shouldn't do that at all. But that would be another route if they wanted to preserve that in the neighborhood. How would we go about doing that? If, if, you know, would we leave that out today? Or, you know, for them to decide? Could there be a survey? Could we take a quick poll, Mayor? I don't know. I'm just.
Mr. Fabrucci, you have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Lowman. I think really council has three options here. One is to just proceed, leaving it in the project. The second is to pull it out. I mean, there's unique characteristics there. I think everybody recognizes that. Staff is comfortable with that, and if we would defer, we probably wouldn't. I mean, you asked the question about leaving it out for a year and coming back. I think with this one, we'd, we'd probably come back at it maybe after five years or more, just because of the unique character. The third option, I think, is to direct staff to work with the neighborhood to look at alternatives to curb and gutter. You know, as we said, just putting in the road without the curb and gutter probably has an impact on the, the anticipated life of, of the road surface. And so we'd want to have something that's going to help extend the life longer. It doesn't have to be the standard curb that we put in everywhere. There may be some other options. And so, you know, before we get to the construction phase, our staff could probably work with the neighborhood to do that. So that remains an option, too.
Thank you, Mr. Fabrucci. That's helpful.
And I can just add to that, if I may, in regards to that third option, working with the neighborhood on a different type of curb and gutter, a different, a different look. It's been brought up in the past where we, when we put the, install the curb and gutter, we install it with a bright white seal on it. That can be put in with more of a clear seal as well, so it doesn't have that, such a look. So we could work on that with the adjacent property owners if that was something, a part of that third option that City Manager Fabrucci just mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. So Mr. Fabrucci just laid out three possibilities on the, the section that we're talking about that is item eight there, Orchard Springs Road from Sixteenth Avenue to the East Terminus. Staff brought forward, Ms. Long brought forward, a suggestion for the West Bloomington Freeway section, item five that we're talking about there, on the idea of the non-access easements, which frankly, I think sounds like a very good idea. If we could pursue that, I think that might be worth pursuing. And trying to rectify this, I appreciate the concerns that this, the residents have with no access to it, no real use of it, and no real benefit from it. So I think if, I appreciate that idea coming forward, and I appreciate the bit of creativity and problem solving there. I think that makes sense. Back to, so if, let's, let's bite one of these at a time. So the reference number five, the West Bloomington Freeway, West Hundred and Second to West Hundredth. Are we comfortable directing staff to, to try and take on this notion of the, the non-access easements, working with the, the residents to try and make that work? I would look to Mr. Fabrucci, then, is that a matter of leaving it in the project or taking it out of the project? Taking it out of the project and, and working through it or leaving it in the project and working through it at the same time?
So Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, we would leave it in the project and then continue to work on, with the homeowners on what that possibility is. Look at, review the policy. There's a number of things that we can do before we get to the assessment roll next week, next year.
Next fall, next fall.
Next fall.
Not next week. We're not doing it next week.
And Mr. Mayor, if I.
Even time flies around here, but not that quickly.
Councilmember Delisandro?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the other piece that I heard tonight that I think isn't still super clear to folks is that if, if, if there is, if the easement concept doesn't work and there is an assessment on the Bloomington Ferry side, there's an, there's, my understanding, if I get this right, it's, there's the implication that the Colfax Avenue side, when it comes up for maintenance, will not be assessed to them because they have, they only pay once. It's either the backside or the front side, but it's not both.
That is correct.
And so I think it'd be important in this particular case in number five here to make that very, very clear to the residents. Because I, I don't know if that may, no pun intended, ease some of their concerns as well.
Appreciate that. And I think to, to Mr. King's point, he, I think he appreciated it and understood it. But to Mr. King's point, I don't, I think he thought he would not be seeing the benefit if it was a thirty-five-year, playing the long game here, thirty-five years out, he necessarily wouldn't see it.
That, that's right. I don't know when Colfax on that side's coming up next, right? It could be two years from now, or it could be twenty. Maybe that's some information we can also give to them. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. So if we're comfortable with that, then we could leave number five in the, in the project and ask, and direct staff to, to move forward to work with the neighborhood regarding non-access easements. So if we're comfortable with that. Number eight, Orchard Springs Road, Mr. Fabrucci kind of laid it out. We can leave it in, we can take it out. Or we can leave it in and direct staff to work with the neighborhood to try and find better, more palatable options when it comes to curb and gutter. Now, I, I will say, this is a very familiar discussion because I think we had the same discussion around Moyer Park when they were, when that work was done. I was just out there within the past month, and frankly, it, it looks fine. I mean, there, there's no, there was no major change, I didn't think, to the neighborhood. And it, it looks like it fits right in with everything else. And in fact, I mean, I'm a curb and gutter kind of guy. I think it adds a neat little pin to things. It, it makes a neighborhood look a little bit neater and, and with the streets buttoned up like that. So I would, I would look to the council. What direction do you think we would like to take? I think staff has said, if it's a matter of taking it out of the project, it's, we could take it out of the project. It would be five years, I think, before we'd re-take, take another look at this or reassess what's over there. But if that's the, if that's the desire of the neighborhood and we, of the neighborhood, I mean, I think of what, eight or eleven houses, whatever they said, and I think we have most of them here in agreement, we could do that and, and move on without, without that as part of this project. Councilmember Lowman?
So Mayor, I know this is in my area here, so the first thing I want to say is, I know we have a, you know, kind of religious or a, a medical rationale to, I know it's just one person, but to, to, to do the delay. And I am, you know, I, I'd like to see that, us consider that, that piece of it, whatever we do. And I also think that, you know, if we could go with that option three that, that the city manager had put forward, because what I'm hearing from the neighborhood is that, you know, they don't, you know, I'm just kind of, you know, checking eyeballs and heads, you know, the private road thing, that's something they're a little interested in, but they want to, you know, kind of continue to do this. And maybe there is some way in which that we could come up with something that's unique. And I do think that this is a different area than, than Moyer Park. You know, Moyer Park is much more of a, you know, it's, it's an area that a lot more people utilize. It's, you know, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a regional treasure, and so folks do come down in that area. And, and I do think this is a little bit different. So I think if staff could work to, you know, you know, get, you know, what the taxpayers need by, you know, putting the investment in that seventy-five percent that we're gonna put in there, some type of gutter that, that preserves that, that, that country style that they're, that they're looking to try to do. I think that's something that, that the, that the neighborhood and staff could, could work to agreement to and do something unique that is within our policy. I think it's possible for, for staff to, to be able to do that, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess overall, I'd just come down on the side of unique components, while, while I'm sure to, to the point about maintaining kind of the current characteristics of the neighborhood. Allowing that degree of customization adds quite a lot of complexity to what, to me, seems like should be one road system with very basic, reliable standards community-wide. And especially when I think about the number of blocks on the east side that are in heart, that are in, in the heart of kind of our real small grid pattern block system. And to have the potential of that be from one style of street to the next style of street to the next style of street. So just from, from a, a point of, I think Councilmember Nelson might have raised this earlier, driving down costs as much as possible for the taxpayer citywide that are supporting these projects as well. I, I'd be comfortable if we want to pull this for a little while. I understand that. But I, I think curb and gutter needs to be inevitable citywide and keep on trucking.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Martin that if the city does this, I think curb and gutter makes sense. I mean, I look at the map and maybe I got myself in trouble for looking at that earlier, but Sixteenth, Eight, Ninety-six has it, Riverview Avenue has it, Riverview Avenue South has a circle. Like, everything around here in this unique neighborhood appears to have curb and gutter other than this one small section of street. And I gotta tell you, it looks like a lovely neighborhood. And, and I, I have no expectation that putting that in there is going to do anything other than keep it as a lovely neighborhood. With, with, the only caveat that candidly, if, if they want to buy the road and maintain it themselves and, and do all of that, I would throw that out as a possibility with, with staff on there. But if we're gonna build it, I think we build it the way that our engineers tell us is the best way to build it, to maintain it the longest. And the entire idea of the PMP program is to keep the cost for the residents on each individual street and throughout the community at the lowest price. And, you know, let's, let's keep the prices low. Let's, let's do it at the least cost. It's, you know, it, it candidly, it's not going to be detrimental to the neighborhood to have curb and gutter. I appreciate their concerns. I appreciate their concerns about the cost. But I am willing to delay it, given the medical reason. I am willing to delay it to have further conversations. If there are other curb types or things like that that staff can work with them on, totally fine with that. That, that makes sense. I, I think we should always work with residents to find the best solution. But the best solution should be the lowest long-term cost for the city to make the best possible road, in my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I, I would be supportive of delaying this, given the, the health concerns and then letting it come back into the, the cycle. I'm particularly sensitive to it just because, you know, my dad passed away a few years ago, and I just had my road redone this year. And so I understand the, the complication it puts in when it takes a long time. You don't know when the crews are gonna show up and the type of work they're doing and if you're gonna have access to your house, to your driveway at any particular time. So I would be supportive of delaying this and pulling this from this year's.
Well, Council, I think we're kind of in consensus here in terms of, of possible delay on this. I mean, I, I would even consider, we, we've heard from the residents, this notion of the curb and gutter and the nature of the, what, what we hear ninety-nine percent of the time from residents is the cost associated with it as well. And so, given the, given the neighborhood opposition, given, there is going to be the cost. I don't know that I necessarily want to delay it a year. If we're gonna take it out, I think I, I would be in favor of taking it out. Staff is, seems to be okay with it. If we could take it out and come back to this in four or five years and see where it is then, I think that would be the way to go on this. But I, I agree. I don't think we, I don't think we go halfway and redo it without putting in the curb and gutter. I think that has to happen because it's a, it's a public stewardship kind of thing, that it's the most efficient and most effective way of doing it. And to do less than that, I think, is negligent on our part. But if the neighbors are in unified opposition to this happening, just with the knowledge that when we come back in five years, the price tag is probably gonna be higher because it's gonna be five years from now. So that, that would be my thought. Councilmember Delisandro?
Just a, a quick, I'm, I'm fine taking it out. But I wonder if the conversation with the, with the residents makes, still makes some sense. If I understand the, the, like, options for curb and gutter that, that we were hearing about, you know, there are those kind of sloping easel, right? We also offer the opportunity to put in rain gardens and things like that while they're in there doing that work because, which is also very nature-oriented and very good for the environment. So, you know, I don't know that it makes sense, you know, maybe when, so that when it does come up in five years, we have a plan that works for everybody. If there's opportunity to educate on those alternatives in the meantime, I think it might still be prudent to do that. In fact, for other people as well. I'm a huge fan of the rain gardens as part of that program anyway. It helps with our stormwater cleanliness and everything. So maybe that's an option that would, would resonate to keep the kind of natural feel.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
So Council, just to keep this conversation moving, I'm gonna make a motion that we remove project number eight, Orchard Springs Road, Sixteenth Avenue to the East Terminus, from the Pavement Management Program Order twenty twenty-four regarding the Pavement Management Program Street Reconstruction Progress.
Second.
So we have, tell me if I'm doing this correctly. If I'm not, you'll hit me in the back of the head, I'm hoping. We've got a motion and a second to amend item four point one to remove item reference number eight, Orchard Springs Road, the Sixteenth Avenue to the East Terminus. And removing that from item four point one, the feasibility study and order of the twenty twenty-four Pavement Management Program Street Reconstruction Project. Everybody clear on that? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Has been removed. So now, Council, now we're considering Exhibit A on your, on, in your packet. The list of, list of projects would be project one through seven and then nine through thirteen for the feasibility study and the Pavement Management Program Street Reconstruction Project. Everybody clear on that as well? Because we're clear, the discussion we had on number five was to direct staff to look at non-access easements for the neighborhood between now and next fall when we would do the, the assessment hearing. Everybody clear on that? So, well, if, if nobody else would, I, I will make a motion to approve the feasibility study and order twenty twenty-four Pavement Management Program Street Reconstruction Project as amended, which means project number one through project number seven, and then project number nine through project number thirteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item four point one on tonight's agenda. Any further council discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Thanks for the conversation tonight. Thanks to staff and thanks to the residents for, for bringing this forward and the conversation there as well. Next up on our agenda is item four point two, and I'm going to metaphorically hand the gavel to Councilmember Delisandro as this is a, a public hearing regarding Seagate Technology Resolutions of Support for Grant and Loan Applications. And I am associated with a competitor of Seagate, so I am going to step away from the, the dais here and turn over the gavel to Councilmember Delisandro. Councilmember Delisandro?
There you go. Item four point two. Mr. Palermo, you coming up to the dais to talk to us about this?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Councilmembers?
Good to be with you tonight. Thanks for being here.
So today's, tonight's public hearing is for Seagate Technology. They will be, this is something you're probably thinking, oh, this usually goes on consent, resolutions of support for grant applications. But they are seeking grant applications through the Minnesota Investment Fund, which requires a public hearing. So that is what we're conducting here. Has everyone cleared out the room with the slide? So just a little bit about the project, Seagate Technology at Seventy-eight oh one Computer Avenue. They are doing an expansion of their facility. Their facility does both production, but also does some technology development there. They do hard dicks, hard disks, have storage devices that they like to point out that most of our data goes into the cloud and then it goes to a hard disk. So very needed in our, our technological infrastructure. They are seeking Federal Chips Act funding, and as part of that, you need a local match. So they are applying for three different sources. And those sources are the Minnesota Investment Fund. Like I said, requires a public hearing, which we will open after this. They also require. They also require resolution of support. And the reason it has a public hearing is because the city actually enters into agreement with the Department of Economic Development. And then we enter an agreement with Seagate Technology if awarded. So, because we will be holding it, we hold the public hearing. The other two, the Jobs Creation Fund and the Minnesota Forward Fund, will go directly to Seagate if awarded and they require just resolutions of support, which typically would have gone on a consent agenda, but we'll just bring it with this item. The Jobs Creation Fund, a little background, the grant gets awarded when they actually create jobs, hence Jobs Creation Fund. And the Minnesota Forward Fund is intended to support applications that are applying kind of federal funding, like the CHIPS Act. And when you get awarded your CHIPS Act funding, then you get awarded your Forward Fund based on that grant. With that, I'll, have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Palermo. Anybody have any questions? I'm sorry, did Councilmember Lowman just leave or did he have to accuse himself as well?
Uh, no.
Okay, okay. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions on this? No? I have one question for you, and that is, I believe that there's some kind of a forgiveness of the loan or whatever built into this, and I was just curious about how much that forgiveness is up to of the $4 million or so that I think is local op, like local.
Yeah. Acting Mayor, they are applying for $4 million through the Minnesota Investment Fund. Is anticipated two will be considered just a straight loan that deed provides, and then $2 million will be a forgivable loan or a grant once jobs are created and they do the documentation that those jobs have been created, then that can, up to $2 million could be forgiven.
Okay. And is the, is the money that we're talking about Bloomington money or is it deed money through Hennepin County or how does that work?
This is all money, Acting Mayor, through deed. Our contribution would just be the staff time that we do to administer meetings tonight and helping with the documentation to deed.
Thank you. Did that spur any questions from any of you? Okay. Well, if there's no other questions, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll ask if anybody in the chambers would like to speak on item 4.2. No takers. Everybody got it out earlier. All right. Mr. Sable, is there anyone on the phone?
Acting Mayor, no one is on the phone.
No one's on the phone. All right, one more time in the, in the chambers, anyone here to speak on 4.2, the public hearing on Seagate Solutions Resolutions of Support? All right, well, if nothing, nobody wants to say anything, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Muah, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nope. Motion carries four zero, which I think is still okay because that's over three. Fantastic. Math, math at nine o'clock at night. Perfect. Okay, great. All right, so I think if there's any other discussion from the team, we can address it. Otherwise, we can just move forward with the motions here. Would anybody like to make the motions? Ah, thanks. Councilmember Martin?
Happy to, Mayor Delisandro. I will move that we adopt a resolution regarding the authorization and approval for a Minnesota Investment Fund application, grant agreement, and loan slash forgivable loan in connection with Seagate Technology LLC.
We have a motion from Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Muah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Motion carries four zero. Councilmember Martin?
All right. I didn't come to sit on the bench tonight, let's go. I move that we adopt a resolution regarding the support of a job creation fund application in connection with Seagate Technology LLC.
Excellent. Councilmember Muah passes the motion. Council, sorry, you seconded the motion from Councilmember Martin. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Great. Motion carries four zero. And one more time, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I move we adopt a resolution regarding the support of a Minnesota Forward Fund application in connection with Seagate Technology.
Once again, Councilmember Muah, sorry, Councilmember Martin made the motion, Councilmember Muah seconded the motion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Great. Motion carries four zero. Fastest public hearing thing we've had in a while. I'm gonna take, gonna take that win right there. Thank you, folks, for doing that.
I will say, Acting Mayor and councilmembers, this is actually really exciting. Another company that is pursuing CHIPS dollars, the amount of potential investment that's coming into Bloomington as a result of that federal opportunity is really good for the community, right? And so, we appreciate that these companies have stepped forward and are willing to make that kind of investment in the community. It's an excellent success story and it speaks a lot to Bloomington because, to some extent, we're the epicenter of this industry in Minnesota. So, you know, as Bloomington goes, so goes the region, at least in this part.
I agree with that completely, Mr. City Manager. And I assume these resolutions of support that we will write will include language to that effect? That, how do they, how do they generally, what do they generally say about, as we are supporting this, what do they generally say?
Acting Mayor members, the programs provide model resolutions that they ask us to adopt, and so that's what you have in your packet.
Okay, gotcha. So there's, it's not a letter in addition to the resolutions that we had in the packet? Okay, great, thank you. All right, well, I guess I can take the gavel and hand it right back to our good friend, Mayor Tim Bussi.
End of the hour. Thank you, Councilmember. Did I miss anything?
We worked really hard to get that done quick.
I forgot my phone, I was lost. Absolutely lost. We will move on to item five in our agenda, the organizational business of the evening. And we've got a few items here, we've got five items we'll be covering tonight. We're gonna continue our 2024 budget discussion, and we're gonna start with item 5.1, which is a discussion that we continued, or we began a few weeks back regarding our 2024 budget and rate discussions around our utility funds. So, Kari Carlson is here. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So yes, at the October 16th council meeting, the 2024 utility rates and corresponding budgets were presented by Utility Superintendent Scott Anderson, Water Resources Manager Brian Greedle, and Public Works Project Coordinator Laura Horner. And this evening, we're here to continue this discussion. The four utility funds are the Water Fund, Waste Water Fund, Storm Water Fund, and the Solid Waste Fund. The 2024 utility rate public hearing had originally been planned for tonight, but after the October 16th council meeting, we moved the public hearing to November 27th so that we could instead come back tonight with some additional information. At the end of this presentation, we will be looking for council's direction on how to proceed for the proposed 2024 rates in preparation for the November 27th public As a quick recap of the services that the utility funds provide, very quick, the water utility provides high-quality drinking water. The wastewater utility provides city sewer services. The storm water utility manages excess rainwater to prevent flooding and improve water quality before it enters ponds, lakes, and rivers. And the solid waste utility provides services for garbage, recycling, organics, yard waste, bulky item management, storm cleanups, and environmental health abatements. And I just want to make a note that the forestry activity for diseased tree removal is moving into the, in the 2024 budget from this fund to the Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund. We'll see more of that on November 20th. But now that park maintenance has moved from public works to parks and recreation. Here is the recap of the proposed rate increases that were presented at the October 16th council meeting. So just very quickly, the increase for the water rate was seven and a half percent, wastewater four, storm water seven, garbage an average of 4.66%. And then recycling, bulky item management, and organics, three percent increases. So these are the key rate drivers for utility rates. So for the water, wastewater, and stormwater utilities, the key rate drivers are the increases in supplies, contract services, materials, and project costs for asset renewal and replacement. Also, the wastewater utility also does have that significant charge from Met Council Environmental Services, and that charge is going up by over nine percent in 2024. And then for solid waste, the driver for the increased price include the collection price escalator set in the contract with the haulers, the disposal cost from HERC admin charges, and the pass-through taxes from both the Minnesota State Solid Waste Tax and the Hennepin County Solid Waste Fee that are passed through. Here are examples of planned utility projects in the long-term budget models, just to give an example of some of these asset infrastructure projects that we're talking about. So 1.3 million to replace one of the city's drinking water supply wells. Supply well number two reached end of life and is beyond rehabilitation. A new well is necessary to maintain the city's plant capacity and water capacity quality. $9 million is planned for construction necessary for de-watering secondary solids at the water treatment plant. And this project is necessary to improve solids handling as part of the water treatment process. Improved technology is needed to address long-term sustainability of the lime softening process. $6 million for AMI or Advanced Metering Infrastructure will replace aging water metering infrastructure to provide more timely reads, advanced leak detection, real-time access to consumption information for the customer, and enhanced conservation. And $2.7 million is for a Penn Lake Stormwater Project, which has been listed by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency as impaired for nutrients, primarily phosphorus. This work was identified as part of the Penn Lake Hydrology Study completed last year. So next, I'm going to run through some long-term budget models. So first, I'm gonna show what the working capital balance looks like on the long-term budget model for the proposed, the originally proposed, proposed increase, and then show what it would look like at a lower increase. So just as a kind of a reminder recap, we have our long-term budget models built with formulas that automatically change color of the working capital balance line when compared to the goal. So the formula compares the working capital balance to the goal that's needed for the fund, and it highlights it in green if it's at 90% of goal or better, yellow if it's over 80%, and then it goes to red if it's under 80%, under 80%. So first one here is the water fund with the original seven and a half percent proposed rate increase. So you can see that the working capital balance in this is green with this proposed rate. Here's, here is the model, water fund model shown with a 5% increase. So you can see the working capital going to more yellows and then later reds in 26 and 27. This one is the wastewater, so this is the original 4% increase. You can see the greens and then goes a little before, below 90% in 27, so it goes yellow. And then this is the wastewater utility with, what that would look like with a 2% increase. So then you can see it goes to red in 2027. Next is the storm water. This was with the original 7% increase. And this is what it looks like with a 5% increase. And then the last fund, the solid waste, this, this is with a 4.66% average increase depending on the size of the garbage. And then the 3% for the recycling and organics, what that looks like at 3%, and then just another at a lower one. This would be a 2% increase across the board is what that looks like. So that's on the budget side, the long-term model, the effect on the working capital balances. The next slides I want to show you, there's going to be three of them. So these slides are showing what the total 2024 city utility bill would look like for a resident at different proposed water increase percentages. There's lots of different scenarios that we could do with all the different rates, but kind of the most impactful was the water. So we wanted to see what it would look like for water going from seven and a half percent down to 5%. And so, this first scenario is showing the impact of a small garbage can combined with 4,000 gallons of water use, so kind of minimums. And on the left is the original seven and a half percent increase water, increased rate for water. And just starting out, this is the same one that we showed back on October 16th. So this would be a $33 increase for the year. And then, just to the right of that, we've got the 7%, a 6%, and a 5%. And what the reduction would be in a year for the resident. So for 7%, that would go down to 48 cents for the year. A 6% increase would be in relation to the seven and a half percent, a savings of $1.68 per year. And then a 5% increase would be $2.88 less for the year. So that's, it's small garbage and 4,000 gallons of water usage. So next we'll go to medium garbage and 11,000, so it goes up a bit. But that second scenario is showing at the 7%, a $1.32 savings, 6%, $4.62, and 5%, $7.92. And that's all in relation to the original proposed seven and a half percent that we had proposed. And then finally, for a large garbage, in here, 22,000 gallons of water use. So this is going into tier-two water rates now, so it's more of an impact. The 7% would be savings of $3.84 a year, 6%, $12.84, and then 5%, $21.24. So, final slide here, just, we're proposing that the city keep the originally proposed 2024 rates, kind of included in the city's overall financial management policies. Part of that is the city's revenue policy, which states that the city will set fees and user charges for funds such as these that support the cost of activity, including capital asset retirement and debt service if necessary, necessary just to maintain a positive cash flow, provide adequate working capital. Some of the reasons listed here, first, just to ensure that there are adequate funds available for asset renewal and maintenance. Secondly, just looking at the annual savings to a customer by the decreasing rates, did not look as significant of an impact as it does to the working capital balance for the funds. For example, decreasing the water rate down from a seven and a half percent increase down to a 5% increase would be a $2.1 million reduction in the available working capital balance for that water fund for the next, for '24 through '27. But for the rate reduction, it could be maybe a savings of, depending on their usage and their size of their garbage, $2.88 savings a year to maybe $21.24 for the year. Third reason is that Bloomington's drinking water rates remain among the lowest in the area for softened water. And then finally, just the potential of future unknown capital obligations associated with contaminants or climate change, evolving regulations that might not currently be captured in the CIP or in our budget models. So that is the end of my presentation. Just look now for the council's direction on how you'd like to proceed for the proposed 24 rates in preparation for the November 27th public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson, appreciate it. And, Council, this was brought back because we had the conversation at the end of this discussion first time. Is there, was there a way that we could possibly reduce some of these rates? Would it impact things significantly? How would it look? And Ms. Carlson's brought forward some options and some possibilities. So I'd look for your feedback on that, look for some thoughts on what you heard. I'm gonna start just with the caveat, I'm sure, you probably noticed, maybe you didn't see it, October 29th in the Star Tribune, there was a story about Minnesota is using significantly less water than it was even 20, 30 years ago. I mean, significantly. And Bloomington is no different than that. And- And so it's, uh, it's something that we have to keep in mind because our water utility is a, is an enterprise fund. And much of our water infrastructure is what we like to call a fixed asset, where it's there and it's, we've got to pay for it, it's got to be used. And so it's, it's a balancing act that we're going to have to look at. And so again, look for your feedback and your thought, your thoughts on this, but with that as the context, with what we just heard and with that notion of the context that it's, it's also true here in Bloomington, we're using less water, which means less water revenue to deal with the water infrastructure that we have in place. So thoughts? Councilmember Loman?
I'll get us started. You know, I was very reluctant to kind of, you know, move off of what, you know, staff had put forward, pardon me on that, to kind of take it down and anything, you know, and I don't know that, I don't know that the council is, we would take it from seven all the way down to five, you know, from, from the water piece. Again, I still am reluctant to, to make any changes, but you know, maybe bringing it down a little bit wouldn't be, you know, from seven to, I don't know what, you know, seven, seven point five to seven would look like. I imagine there's going to be an impact if, if you did that. I don't know how much savings, though, that you really provide if you don't take that full two percent cut. You know, particularly with the garbage piece, you know, where, with, you know, coupled with that water piece at that upper tier level, you know, I've got a little more interest in that because that seems to have a much bigger impact to folks. But again, that's, I mean, I don't want to make it sound like twenty-one dollars isn't a lot of money. That is, you know, that's, that's quite a bit of money. But I don't know, I just, I'd rather us just look overall to figure out what we can do, you know, with our water tier system, you know, as a, as a long-term thing. We're already looking at the solid waste piece to figure out what makes sense to kind of move forward with that. And so I would rather just kind of wait before we kind of start making, moving the stuff around. That's just my, my opinion.
Others? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I support the staff's recommendation at the rates that they had them at. I do sympathize because there are costs with people, and with water, I would just recognize that the rate is not the cost. It's rate times use, that is the cost. And use, there are some items you can do to control that, you, you can reduce it. And at the high level of the twenty-two thousand, we have data that almost no households use more than the, what is it, the twelve thousand per two months in the winter. In the summer, watering lawns, filling wa- filling pools, washing cars, maybe. I still consider those discretionary. And the reality is, if, if we do something to, I mean, I've seen things eliminate the second tier, well, all that does is raise the cost of water for everybody in the city because tier one has to go up, we have to cover that seven million dollars that comes from tier two. You know, and in my mind, particularly with the water, I mean, we bill it based on how much you use, and that to a certain extent makes sense, but the cost isn't the water, the water's free, it's in a big aquifer. No one owns the aquifer, we don't pay anybody to have the water, we pay for the well. We pay for the pumps, we pay for the pipes, we pay for the distribution system, we pay for the treatment, we pay for the towers, we pay for the infrastructure. The water's the output of that, and we have to all pay for that. And that's the challenge of this, that's the whole weird quandary of, we want you, we want people to use less water because we don't want to drain our aquifers like they have in many parts of this country. I mean, you can go see the data on the drained aquifers, and ours is not drained, and we don't want to do that. And yet, that to a certain extent means the rate goes up. It's, it's just a weird quandary in that way, but these are minimally impactful. I do agree with Councilmember Loman on the, the trash and things like that. I don't know that there's much we can do about that until we renegotiate the next contract. And I was in favor of an RFP last time, I'm in favor of an RFP next time. I am in favor of doing everything we can to get the best darn rates we can for things, and we are in a much stronger position this time. So I have confidence that we will, we will be in that better position at that time. So I'm supportive where staff is, we need to pay for these things. One last comment, a lot of what I heard during the campaign is, well, why don't you, you know, save up money? Why don't you have the money to pay for this maintenance? Well, this is how we do it, you know, we have to collect money to have the money to pay for the maintenance of things within the community, and that's what we're doing here. And, you know, we're looking at somewhere between a two dollar and a twenty dollar per year impact to households. You know, I, I think that's reasonable, so I've said way more than I needed to, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Just a minute, Mr. Furby, something to add with this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure I had something really wise and sage to say, but it has completely escaped me.
Very good. Moving on, Councilmember DeSandro.
Well, I don't know how to follow that pithy comment. I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, so I agree in principle with everything that Councilmember Nelson said, we do have to pay for things. You know, we're keeping our working capital balances as high as we possibly can in order to pay for those things. I totally get it, right? Nobody wants to be asked to do a special assessment of a high-dollar amount because we didn't have that fund available. But I will also say that, like, there's some places here where I don't feel as uncomfortable. So like, the increase of two percent versus four percent on the wastewater utility fund, it seems like it's not super impactful unless we, unless we don't raise them again, and of course we will at some point in the future as well. So it's not like we wouldn't continue to move that, that estimate up. But the, but the, the numbers that we have for the small garbage, small gallon water uses, just on water, it's not on wastewater and storm and all that stuff, so I don't have a, I don't have a visual on what the impact of that is. I only have the visual on the, on the water utility here. Excuse me, so I don't, I, I'm, I'm of a, I guess a combined mind. I think where we can minimize these increases, we should. And what I mean by that is, you know, we don't, we don't, maybe I'm crazy, but I don't know that every single one of these, excuse me, every single one of these working capital fund balances need to be at ninety-eight percent all the time, year over year, over year, over year. I couldn't tell by what the, what staff provided when those big projects are going to come due, like the water fund, like, is, do I see the nine million dollars for the construction of mechanical de-watering secondary solids in, in there? Like, I couldn't quite tell. I assume that that's what the eight point one five percent is, maybe? But I couldn't draw those conclusions. So I, I guess, I have a feeling that it doesn't matter. I think you all are probably of like-minded, and I'm not, and that's fine, so we can always worry about that also at the, at a later time. But, you know, I, here's the thing, right? I, what I heard from people is every single place they look, the money goes up, right? Every single place that they look. We're adding the sales tax now, understandably, it's the right thing to do. It's forty cents on the dollar, you know, to, to us as opposed to a hundred, you know, a dollar on a dollar, I get that. Then, then the levy is at, we're sitting at nine something right now as a cap. Then every single rate, utility rate goes up, and every single, you know, I think we had fee changes at, you know, in permitting and like inspections and all of these kinds of things. It's just, it's a hard sell, right? And to the extent that we can minimize that, we should, in my opinion. So I, I'm not opposed to the recommendations here, but I also, and I, you know, I trust, I trust finance. I know you're very good stewards of our money, and that matters a lot, right? So I know you're not trying to just squirrel money away for no good reason, like, I realize that, absolutely. I just want us to, oh, I have some, thank you, you're very kind. I, I just want us, I want us to, to, to try where we can to minimize these impacts. And, you know, I know one percent doesn't necessarily sound like a lot, but it's a lot easier story to say that you, you did a six percent thing than you did a seven and a half percent thing. I mean, it, it does matter to people, and the perception is reality there. So all that having been said, I really appreciate the feedback, and I, I was probably one that asked for the five percent thing, so very much appreciate the analysis being done on it. I think it gives us a really interesting picture, and I think there's some middle ground there, so that's my thoughts, thanks.
Councilmember Martin and Councilmember Mua, Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just briefly, I won't rehash everything that's being said. And I appreciate Councilmember DeSandro's point about costs, because it, it is, every time you turn around, numbers go up. I mean, we, very long story short, food insecurity in the Twin Cities right now is the worst it's been since the Great Depression, and it's only skyrocketing. Second Harvest Heartland Food Bank moved almost twice as much food this year as we did in two thousand and nineteen, and we're barely keeping up. And it's because everybody's getting nickel and dimed everywhere they go. I think to, to that end, I understand leveraging something like these funds as a way to try and realize some savings, but at the same time, I think it gets back to Mayor, what, what you've aptly phrased the stop-doing list, because we can save two eighty-eight a year from seven and a half to five percent. But we also had a meeting pretty recently where we talked about five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars in new staff adds. That would be covered, sure, for the first few years, but then roll on. That's a one percent increase right there that we talked about for a half hour before we said, let's, let's move forward. So I, I think if we're, if we're going to have a cost-saving conversation, and I know I won't be around for that, but I just, I, I would recommend framing it based on conversations I've had with my constituents as, do you want us to drastically slow down parks projects? Do you want us to not prioritize the racial equity work we're doing? Put, put it out there as opposed to saying tinkering around the edges is going to make a meaningful difference? Why nickel and dime when you could just say, what do you want to pay for?
Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor, and that's where I was going with Councilmember Martin's thought there is, as much as I want to save residents' money, because I'm, I have a young family, every dollar counts. A dollar means I'm getting formula or I'm not. And then I'm not the only family in, in town who's going to have to make that decision because we're getting increases everywhere. But this just isn't going to make that impact. And so it just comes down to the question of what really matters, and what are the big-ticket things that we have to pause or draw back on that will then give people the actual opportunity to, to save, to, to let us know what they really care about? And so as I've been hemming and hawing about this, I, I would be supportive of staff's recommendation, but looking forward to the other conversations that come around once we get into it.
Other comments? Councilmember Loman?
I'll just, I'll say this, I really appreciate the fact that we did this exercise. You know, I, I, part of the reason why I held the item earlier today was because we had a resident that's, that's, you know, saying exactly what Councilmember DeSandro is saying. You know, I'm getting nickel and dimed to death, and I'm seeing, you know, councilmembers traveling all over the place. Hey, where's the relief? And so I do think that, you know, as we're looking at the, the final budget, you know, let's, you know, in, in that spirit of what, what Councilmember DeSandro is saying, let's look at a way of looking at, at cutting some big item or something to bring that overall rate down. Again, I don't know what it is, you know, it's much easier to say it, you know? We've had that, you know, don't-do list for, the stop list for, for years. But, you know, I know there are some folks who are on fixed income, I've heard that from people who are big supporters of the city, you know? You know, hey, I'm, I'm just really getting roughed up here. And so, you know, and it is a part of our, our strategic priorities, we talk about that affordability component of it. Let's see what we can do this year to try to bring some kind of savings back to those residents that are requesting it.
So if one of our goals with this was to provide direction to the staff, I think we have provided direction to the staff. So I appreciate the, the additional information here, and I think you do have your direction, and I think we'll look forward to the official public hearing on the twenty-seventh of this month.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is item five point two, our continued budget discussion, this being on our information technology department. Amy Chaney, we, we don't see you for months, and now we see you twice in, in one meeting. It's good to see you, welcome back.
Hello again, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to present the IT budget. Let's start with the challenges, why not? I can do it in reverse if you want. Technology, I know what you're laughing at.
Irony can be pretty ironic.
There is a bit of irony there, isn't there?
All right, well, so I will start with, we've got three supervisors online if we need them for questions. We've got Hal Bush, Kyle Johannes, and Justin Fox are available if we have questions or maybe if we need some technical support. I will start with our, our mission statement. IT inspires innovation through collaboration with city staff and our partners to deliver the highest-quality services. And our agenda for this evening is to talk about the two thousand and twenty-four versus two thousand and twenty-three budget request. Very good. Staffing, explanation of the two thousand and twenty-four budget increases, new initiatives and challenges, and have some time for a Q and A at the end. Okay, so this is a look at what our two thousand and twenty-three budget was versus our two thousand and twenty-four. As you can see, we have an increase in both revenues and expenses. And this next slide is our long-term model. And as Kari was explaining during the utilities discussion, we look at our capital balance, our working capital balance, and we will be below our goal next year and significantly below the goal by two thousand and twenty-seven. So for several years, IT charges were held artificially low due to, to keep pressure off the tax levy and general fund budget instead of fully charging off the cost. So transfers to the IT, to the IT fund were made from other funds like strategic priorities to keep, keep us in business, basically. Infrastructure, licensing, and software agreements are all increasing in price. And as a city government, we require specialized software, hardware, and services to manage the many city departments that we have, including public safety utilities, engineering, community development, public health, legal, finance, and I can keep going. Each department or division is really its own line of business, and they require specialized software. The city also handles sensitive data and needs to adhere to strict security and compliance standards such as FBI, CGIS, HIPAA. And this requires investments in advanced security measures and data encryption. Software systems require constant support and maintenance and software updates, and hardware repairs add to overall expense. We deal with large volumes of data, storing, managing, and securing the state is costly. We must have redundant systems and disaster recovery solutions to ensure continuity of services during emergencies, and hiring and retaining skilled IT personnel is competitive. Looking at the IT charges to departments, we charge on a per-employee basis based on full-time and part-time regular employees, and that cost is about ten thousand, seven hundred dollars per, per year. And this was an increase of eight point five percent from the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four budget. This next slide is just another look at the charges to departments by percentage. And as you can see, our two largest departments are, have the largest percentage of charges for IT services. And next we'll look at staffing. This is a look at our staff, we have nineteen full-time and one part-time position currently. We are requesting a full-time network administrator. And, and this is to do a few things. One, it's needed to support new staff and programs and help with implementing required implementations. One, it's needed to support new staff and programs and help with implementing required implementations required for construction of new facilities and refurbishing or remodeling existing facilities. The network administrator will help ensure a consistent response to cybersecurity threats by performing the more routine tasks associated with network administration so that senior-level staff can take a more proactive approach to mitigating and securing vulnerabilities. Another note about staffing is our GIS staff. Two of those staff members came to IT from Public Works Engineering in 2022. So, that was an increase in staff back in 2022. And just taking a look at what we actually do, we support over 850 end-users, 150 applications. Back to my, everybody needs something very specialized and specific to run their departments or divisions. We have 60-plus projects per year. We support the phone system, security, and all of the technology infrastructure for the city. Some specific programs that we have are GIS, geographical information systems, data management. While this is a citywide effort, IT does play a significant role in data management. And then fiber optics, which I'll talk a little bit about on the next few slides. We do a satisfaction survey annually, and we've got a 4.5 satisfaction survey or results right now. And we close about 3,500 support tickets each year. And that doesn't include all of the services that we do, but it does capture the ones that are through our ticketing system. Looking at the 2024 budget increases, software and hardware maintenance increases of about 319,000. These are somewhat uncontrolled costs, some controlled, some are new software that we're adding. Some are just increases up to 20% increase for software. We are expanding our fiber optics network, and you can see on the map, the blue areas are the ones that we are adding in 2023 and 2024. We also have an IT strategic plan and a GIS strategic plan that include initiatives, and then looking at adding that network administrator. Which I do want to point out is already programmed in our budget as a contract employee, if that's not approved as a full-time position. New initiatives are Green Cities, Safe Cities, which are both GIS initiatives for our Parks Division and the Police Department. These are primarily for additional decision-making abilities and transparency. We are also looking at system resiliency and redundancy, and that's primarily with our backup methodology and our network storage. And on fiber optics, the first connection that we planned to do this year was to Fire Station 2 and Dwan Golf Course. The bid spec is in progress. We will not get the fiber constructed this year, so that will be a spring of 2024 project. And cybersecurity, we're also looking at working with Minute, State of Minnesota IT, for an enhanced partnership. You may be aware that the State of Minnesota was granted funding for cybersecurity, and they are making ways to help local agencies as well. And then the last new initiative that we're looking at is artificial intelligence, which is clearly not going away. So, we are going to convene a work group to study how to best leverage AI in the city, and then also look at the challenges and the anticipated risks involved with AI. Additional challenges that we are facing, which I've kind of mentioned, but the financial resources needed to keep the systems up to date, especially as we move things into the cloud. It doesn't mean that we don't have any work to do with those systems, so we are still maintaining and supporting those systems. And as I mentioned before, we don't have a lot of leverage when it comes to the increases that are pretty much annual, 5% to 20% increases. Just the continually evolving security landscape. You can't go through your phone without seeing another, you know, breach or something. So, we want to make sure that we're continually watching that. And then just supporting construction of new and refurbished cities, facilities. There's a few coming down the pipe, and it's kind of hard to plan the timing of those and making sure that we're staffed appropriately to meet the needs of those. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And as I mentioned, Hal and Kyle and Justin are also available.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I will say two numbers that just jumped out at me. And I don't know if it's a question as much as a comment, but the per-employee costs of $10,772 is just stunning to me. And I guess there is a question, how does that compare with our other system-wide operations? I've got to imagine it's significantly higher than what Fleet Services charges, than what, you know, anybody else charges. And I'm, yeah, I'm looking at him to answer that question. And then the second question I had, I was also surprised to see 150 applications. Now, we're all unique. We all do different things. I get that. But that seems incredibly high for an organization of this size. And I don't have comparable, so I can't say that, you know, it should be this. But it just seems to me, my goodness, for the things that we do that are fairly standard, fairly standard, more than 150 applications seems like a lot.
Mayor, yes, I'll take that answer, that question first, and then we can circle back to your other question. You know, they can be very small applications from, you know, just for a few users that have a very particular need to very large applications like our ERP system. So, when you take it all into account, it adds up pretty quickly in how many applications we have.
Yeah, like I said, I don't have any comparable, or I can't say, well, what about this? But that just strikes me as a significant number. Mr. Brugge, any thoughts on that per-employee cost? That just seems remarkably high.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we'd have to go back and take a look at that for the the charging methodology for the different departments and the different funds is different, right? So, with the facilities, we have, you know, a calculation that includes square footage and occupancy. With Fleet, it's, you know, departmental and operations, and so it isn't necessarily on a per-employee basis or a per-vehicle basis. It's, you know, utilization of that vehicle gets factored in. So, I don't know if there's a good comparison on the per-employee cost that I can give you for any of the different funds. But we can, we can take a look at it and see if we can come up with something.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, just, you know, for my own edification, but also as a point of reference. And I understand technology is, technology is different. I get that in a lot of ways. But just something maybe to look at and to consider and to try and wrap our arms around a little bit better.
And Mayor, one more point. It was just a few years ago that we changed from a per-device system to a per-employee. And so, sort of taking what we knew about charging by device and converting it to a per-employee, you know, that's what we had to do.
Thank you. Also, any questions, thoughts, comments? Councilmember De La Sando?
See if I can get through this one this time. Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was going to make a comment similar to yours about that, and I'm wondering if, you know, there's always, there's a very big difference, and I don't assume what goes into that number. But certainly, we know that our, you know, IT professionals, our GIS professionals, you know, folks that are actually actively managing our websites on a daily basis and other things like that, would have a different computer system and a different set of monitors, and they'd have a different, you know, requirement for, you know, access to the internet, et cetera, than, you know, somebody who's in a more administrative role or whatever. I mean, you know, the folks in legal have very specific software packages. They have to use LexisNexis and other things like that that, you know, somebody in Public Works is not accessing and all that. So, I wonder if there's the potential to do more of a tier program at the per-employee basis where, you know, employees that are largely, you know, in the field, who are like more on their mobile device than they are at a desktop or, you know, other things like that, who don't necessarily have, you know, need for, you know, high-end, high, you know, yeah, I guess, I don't know, high-speed, like whatever, you know, is there a way to say like, okay, there's a group of people that are in this like $6,000 tier, and there's this group of people that are in this $8,000 tier, there's this group of people that are in this $11,000 tier. And do we, can we do that, and can we potentially realize some savings? I don't know if that's true or not. It could be that, you know, you end up at the same number because you put some people down in the $6,000, and other people end up in the $12,000 to make it work, right? So, I get that. But I was surprised by it, too. I'm just thinking, like, in my own setup at home, right, I work from home today, and I had to buy all, you know, my company bought my whole setup, and even with my standing desk and with my dual monitors and with my, you know, M1 Macintosh and like all this other stuff, I can't come up with $10,000 for my setup on a yearly basis. So, it's just, you know, and it's one thing if it's capital, like, I spent $10,000 to get a setup, but then I don't spend that money the second year and third year and fourth year, right? You know, depreciation aside. So, I don't know. If there's room there to look across, you know, the 850 people we support, that would be great because that's, that could be significant. Thanks.
Other questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick technical questions. Fire department allocation went up 102%. Is that due to new firefighters? They cost more IT than having paid-on call? Okay, that was easy enough to answer. I had a question about the benchmark as well. And as opposed to looking at the benchmark just from what other services are, do we benchmark against other organizations in terms of how much they're spending, kind of to Councilmember De La Sando's point? I just have a small company, so no way I'm spending $10,000 a person, you know? But to be fair, IT department, which consists of me, is not that great. I don't support Max, so I can tell you that right now. In terms of the construction projects and the cost, why is that not built into the construction budget to do the infrastructure and capital and things of that nature? Why is that built into this budget?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Nelson, some of the costs are built into that, but others, you know, they rely on IT for certain services, and they're not budgeting outside of the costs for that. So, like, planning for the network schema of a new building that relies on IT, we don't outsource that. If they need a new fiber optics connection directly to that building, that is built into the construction cost. So, it sort of depends on what it is for the new building.
That's fair. I would just look to the city manager to maybe consider looking at that differently, that if we're providing design services for the building, that would be a capital cost that could go into just like architecture and things of that nature, even if it's coming from internal staff. The, one of the comments you made was contract employee was built into it if we don't approve the new position? Could you explain that further to me? I don't understand that part.
Yeah. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, we determined that we need to have a network administrator. Like, we are not going to be able to fulfill our duties without a network administrator. We did not know if we could add a full-time network administrator, but we need one. So, we built in the cost of a contractor in the event that we do not get approved for a full-time position. And that's with all the new construction and remodels and refurbishing and cybersecurity. We just, we can't do it with the staff that we currently have.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, the issue there is just whether there's a sensitivity around the FTE ads. That's the issue, right? And if so, if council wanted to say we're going to take a hard line on FTEs, then we have to go the contractor approach. So, we have funds to deliver the service in the budget, right? It's just a matter of whether we do it through the contractor route or through the staffing route. And frankly, we'll get more going through the staffing route because of what we pay on an hourly basis for contractors.
Fair enough. Question about fiber optics. We've had this discussion recently about the number of fiber optic companies that are in the marketplace. Is there a point at time at which it makes sense to utilize public or private fiber optics? I assume ours are very sensitive in terms of what they do, serving the fire stations and things like that. But is it possible to use those private networks at some point in the future?
Mayor, councilmember, Councilmember Nelson, we have looked at that in the past. Generally, the leasing is prohibitive, you know, compared to building. We haven't looked at it recently. The private nature of it is very helpful to the city as well, so that we know that no other traffic is riding on that same network. But we could look at leasing again. It's just, it proved to not be a cost-effective method in the past.
That's fair. And I don't know if we're there. I just know that they're putting a lot of fiber in Bloomington right now, and that that may have completely changed or may completely change in the next two to three years. Last comment I have on this is this budget concerns me. You know, I look at a situation where, I mean, I can understand the '21 to '22 because of we brought in GIS, and so there's additional costs because you're just taking something out of someone else's budget. But, you know, going from $6.4 million to $8 million last year, you know, that's significant. Going to 8.5, and then, you know, we continue to drop down that working capital balance. And it seems, just looking at the spreadsheet, page five on that, was all driven by costs and costs escalating very, very significantly. According to my calculations, just shy of 50% in six years going up. I mean, the costs are going up extraordinarily rapidly, and I just want to know what we do to control that going forward. Because this seems to be one of the budgets that's driving a lot of the things. And we, you know, we just talked about water and that type of thing, and then said, well, what else can we do? This looks to me to be an area that we need to really, really do a deep dive into and figure out something to do here because this frankly is quite startling to me.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, we share that concern. You can just see by the forecast, it's not sustainable, right? And so, to some extent, we're a little bit hostage to vendors and service providers and what their rates and charges are. Some of this is increases from them because they can, to some extent, right? And that's not to minimize that their costs are increasing as a provider. But that's driving a lot of our cost increase, too, is that the subscriptions, the agreements are all increasing. I'd say probably well above what certainly the CPI is, right? And so, we're a little worried about that in the future, too.
Councilmember Lomond?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, thank you for the deep dive thing, Councilmember Nelson, and the concern, because I was going to say that, so I don't have to say that now. You know, as we look at, look at this budget, and I guess the question I have is that from a staffing perspective, and we look at the challenges that you have laid out and understanding that, you know, I mean, there's, you know, there's a constraint in terms of what you've got to do. But if something catastrophic happens, that kind of changes the entire calculus completely around those challenges. And so, what I'm trying to understand as a policymaker, you know, in terms of the positions that you're asking for, you know, are all the ones that are aligned in this particular budget that we're presenting today, are they long-term needs to meet those challenges? Or are there holes in that staffing? Maybe I'll leave it at that. I'll just do that first question first, and then I'll ask the second one.
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Lomond, there are long-term needs. As we add programs and staff in other areas, we're adding more complexity to IT. So, we have to keep up with that pace. We can't really expect new employees to come in with new programs, new needs, and say you don't have the IT services to support the programs that you're, that you need to do. So, that isn't changing right now. We're adding new programs. We need to continue to keep up that pace. And quite frankly, we're at a pace right now that we can't sustain for IT. So, it's, we just, we need to keep moving forward as far as staffing goes.
And then in terms of those risks that are in the future, you know, if I, you know, if we didn't have that budget there and you were to construct it, I know this is dangerous to ask this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Because I look at those challenges, and I think those challenges are real that are out there. You know, in terms of, you know, what that looks like down the road, two, three years, I know it can change. You know, in terms of positioning ourselves to be able to address those concerns. to be able to address those concerns, would you suggest that we would need to look, you know, if there, again, there's no, you know, pretend there's no budget there? Would you add additional positions to have us better positioned for those potential challenges that are out there? If you understand what I'm asking?
I think I do. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Lowman, I, I think the challenges are always going to be there and they're always going to be evolving. We can't take a chance on cybersecurity. So that is something that, you know, whatever we do, we have to make sure that we are covered in that way. So, and same with offering services. If we're falling behind with our technology, we're not able to offer the services that our residents have come to expect. So I see it evolving and I don't see that we're ever going to be able to let up, so to speak. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so pretty much you're telling me it's a strap-in. Here we go, it's going to be real exciting. No, I hear what you're saying. So, yeah, so I mean, that scares me a little bit, you know, that, you know, that we need, need that piece. And so, you know, this is what we need today, but we're going to probably need more as it goes along.
I'm guessing Kyle is itching to say something, but maybe you want to see if he's, especially around the cybersecurity. I think he's got a really good understanding of where we could potentially fail if we don't continue to invest in that. So I don't know, Kyle, are you, were you itching to say something?
I just wanted to say with that, we are leveraging a lot of services from the federal government. We definitely work with two divisions of Homeland Security, which is the Cybersecurity Infrastructure and Security Agency, so CISA, and MSISAC, which is the Multi-State Information and Share and Analysis Center. So we're doing our best to try to keep up with that security infrastructure, our security model that is, that is out there and stay within industry best practices. But without some of this additional staffing, especially like the network administrator that's, that's in this, we're going to continue to fall behind and to be able to address the security needs in a timely manner and not put their organization's information at risk. It's, it's a need more than I'd say at want.
All right, council, anything else? Otherwise, we should get moving here. It's getting, the hour is getting late again.
If I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just tie this one up if council doesn't have additional questions. I think this is one just from a, both a policy and just an understanding perspective that sometime early next year, mid-next year, we want to spend a little bit more time just going deeper into the IT infrastructure of the city and how we deliver the services. Because, you know, those four years are going to fly pretty quickly, right? And, and I will say that this is not the first time that this fund has had flashing red lights on it. We have tapped into fund overages in the past and transferred into the IT fund to shore it up in the past. That may be an option. Obviously, we're going to have to look at a lot of different things, but just the, you know, the structure of our charges and everything else, I think is something we'll want to spend a little bit of time on next year.
I would agree with that and thank you for that, Mr. Brugge. I think that's a good idea.
And I do have one more note before Amy steps away from us. You know it's coming, right? So.
Fortunately, I do.
Yeah, so we just learned on Thursday, actually, that Amy is a finalist for the Golden Gov IT Award in the individual leadership category. And that award announcement is going to happen December 14th at the Government IT Symposium. And I think it's a wonderful recognition of the leadership that Amy provides within our organization, not just for the technology needs of all of our employees, but as a member of our executive leadership team. She, she provides tremendous leadership throughout our organization and just want to make sure that everybody knows that. So congratulations.
Congratulations, very cool. Well done. On to item 5.3 on our agenda. And this is a discussion of our Community Development Department budget. And our Community Development Director, Carly Henderson, is here. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, welcome, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I have a very brief.
That's what they all say.
No, I learned last time I presented the fire station to you that that was a very detailed presentation. I was like duly noted. Okay, so I'm here to present on the 2024 Budget for Community Development. And just as Amy provided, here's our agenda. So I don't need to go over that. So I thought Kari was going to be up here helping me, but she gave me notes. So here's the 24, 2024 Budget Request for Community Development. The General Fund compared to the 2023 Budget. One note in the revenue section is that the majority of the permit revenue is budgeted at the General Fund level as opposed to at the Community Development Department level. It's not that we're not earning the money. You guys just take credit for it somewhere else. And so the overall expense increase is an increase of 2.55%. And here is the department. We're staffed right now about 75 people. We have about five to six vacancies. This does include the HRA import. As you both all know, that's a separate budget. And yeah, I like to say that we have five divisions and two authorities. So really, a few budget increases. Mainly, we needed to come up with a succession plan. Duke Johnson, our building official, discovered that Para had a phased retirement and showed up in my office that afternoon and was like, hey, how do I make this happen? So he is actually working four days a week right now. Oh, sorry, three and a half. And he will be going to three days in 2024 and he is phasing himself out. So I talked to our city manager about creating an assistant building official. We did promote somebody from within. And so they are spending a lot of time together and the goal is that once Duke is finally phased out, that our, we will have a new building official. And then the other big increase we have is a number of items for professional services. And although the professional services increased by $43,000 in these areas, and it's about $20,000 apiece, the net impact to the overall budget was lessened by a decrease in the assessing division. We had a subscription for TRP. And so that was between assessing and our port. And our General Fund assessing cost was $23,250. So it was a rather expensive subscription that we will not have to have IT support anymore. And yeah, so we put that kind of into our professional services, mainly with our language access plan. We are still wondering if we will have to need outside legal counsel for our sign ordinance as well as working out the operations of Small Business Development Center and then just work with our CD team. And so new initiatives, we've talked about this. We are hoping to have it open in late 2024. And Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, we have baked our IT capital into that budget. So it will not be in the IT budget. And then, as you all know, we will be kicking off Hatch Bloomington. Sean Lundie is working diligently with the chamber staff. I will, I don't even know what I should say. I was saying, so we had given you a timeline of announcing in January. The chamber would like to announce it at their annual meeting in March. And what Jonathan Wyhagen has said to me is that they usually call it the MSP, Regional Chamber, but he would like to call it the MSB. And the B standing for Bloomington. And he said we could have a lot of fun with that. So stay tuned for that. And wanted to talk a little bit about some of the challenges in terms of our construction permit revenue. As you know, we had a great year in 2022. It was better than average. We had a lot of people working from home that wanted to do build-outs. We had a number of multifamily development projects. Higher interest rates encouraged homeowners to stay put and do these remodels and turning their office, their home into office spaces. And so our revenue that you will see elsewhere in the budget, as I described, is lower than it has been in the last several years. And that's because of increased costs on construction material, labor shortage and the interest rate increases. And that is it. I won't stand for any questions.
I just want to summarize again, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, that after looking at a number of budgets where we see increases that are really, you know, challenging, it's nice to see one where we have a 2% increase for the, from one year to the next. So appreciate the work that our team in community development did and our community development director in putting together this budget.
I would agree. Council questions? Councilmember Lowman?
Just more of a comment, just well-placed. I like how it was, you know, last one and then this one. Well-placed, city manager.
No questions, it looks like. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And our last, I think this is our last departmental budget discussion for the year. And we will call on our legal department. Item 5.4, Ms. Manderscheid.
All right. Good evening.
Can I go down to the podium?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm not. I like to spread out. I got a lot of stuff here. All right, mayor members, tonight, I'm not alone here. I've got some other folks here with me. We've got our compliance manager, Amir, back there. You recognize him from previous presentations. And then, oh, there we go. Jennifer and Peter deputies are out there as well. So I'm going to do the talking. And then if you ask questions that I'm, that I want to call on them to answer, they'll, they'll wander up here. I, we all appreciate that we're standing in front of adjournments. So with that in mind, we'll motor on. Here is a very long mission statement that we have, that we developed a couple of years ago. It's very long.
Not as memorable as ours.
Essentially, I will say we are an in-house legal department. Bloomington has had, I've never actually looked to see how long it's been that we've had an in-house legal department, but I've met many of our previous in-house attorneys. So I'm guessing a very long time. And Bloomington is one of four cities in Hennepin County that had, that have in-house legal. Minnetoka, Golden Valley, Minneapolis and us. And then for in-house prosecution, Maple Grove, Minnetoka, Bloomington and Minneapolis. So we are unique slightly in that regard, but not terribly unique, in my opinion, given our size. We meet through the League of Minnesota Cities with the in-house counsel, attorneys throughout the state of Minnesota, and it's a full call. And those folks are spread throughout the state, oftentimes in charter cities. So with that in mind, our agenda is the same as the ones you've seen before in the previous presentations. I have two key takeaways for you tonight. And frankly, I wrote them before Amy Chaney's presentation. So bear that in mind. Every year, the volume of our work increases. The data coming into our office increases. In some cases, I was looking over the data again in preparation for tonight. It's been almost a doubling since 2020. A doubling of the work. We are near 1,000 contracts that we process through the office and many other increases in the volume of work that we're doing. So that's the one key takeaway for you. And related to that, it's increasingly complex and increasingly digital. The second takeaway that I want you to keep in mind is that our staffing model, and I know everyone comes up here and says our staffing model is lean. I'm telling you, we're lean. We're super lean and legal and we have to outsource when we have pinch points because we're not able to manage the workflow when we have new inputs. And in order to manage that workflow and the volume, we rely heavily on technology. We have created and spent a fair amount of money creating integrations with our justice partners, both internally and externally, so that we can send and receive digital information all entirely automated. So that's great and wonderful and it works great when it's all working great. And then sometimes our justice partners change their minds. And so our ability to control that and the impact when those systems go down or when they change is pretty significant. We're in the midst of one right now that we were told that was going to happen for a while and then sort of nothing was happening. And then all of a sudden, we got an email that said, next month, they're turning it off. And so just today, all 75 county attorneys sent a letter to the, to the chief judge and said, hey, this isn't working. So the impact is significant. And when you run lean, we're all scrambling. We have a sign in the office that says, because attitude of gratitude, that says things we're grateful for. And one of them is when this particular database is working. So that's, that's the impact of technology on us. All right, next slide. This is our high-level budget. Basically, we, we have salaries and then we have internal service charges, which is all the tech stuff that you all were talking about earlier. And then the intergovernmental is the public safety funding that, that was briefly provided information to a little bit ago and I'll get into more detail tonight. Next slide. Here is our organization. We have four managers. Three and a half staff positions are assisting on the civil side of things that are reporting to Peter. Nine are reporting to Jennifer on the criminal team. And the, there's a paralegal that assists on the compliance side. And there is a little bit of staff support. We share the risk and litigation manager. 60% in finance, we have 40% of that position's time in legal. Our request, go to the next slide, is that blue box there. Both of our budget increases, and I put it in quotes, is because there is this intergovernmental transfer that's happening and there are costs associated with them. But we're funding them through the public safety funding. And what we're experiencing is, as I mentioned, a significant increase in discovery. So if you think about all of the new Ring cameras that have gone in, all of the new body cameras that are, folks are wearing, all of the new parking lot cameras, everywhere you look, there's more digital data being created all the time. And we have, we have, we have a statutory obligation to produce that in the litigation process. So because of that, we have, we have an automated process and we do our best to push data around, but there's just a lot of it. So when, just to give you a snapshot, 2020, we had 9,000 items approximately. In 2024, we had estimated in July that we'd have 30,000 items. We already know that that number is wrong. It's higher than that. It's going to be higher than that because we're, I believe, Jennifer, we're already over that amount in 2023. So we were, Kari and Jennifer and I were joking, got a little bit like, sort of, what's the right word to use? Is there a bigger word than exponential? And we landed on exponential. But we're seeing, I want to say it's five-fold growth. It's just huge. And so we need another person to do the work. Right now, we have a full-time person in, on the criminal team and then we borrow half the time of someone on the civil team. We just need another human being to do the work.
Councilmember?
If it's okay, if we ask really quickly a question. Just a quick question. When you say discovery request processing, how much of that discovery requesting is related to FOIA-style requests or public requests versus inter, like, legal requests from, from, you know, court and other things like that?
All of this is prosecution, criminal prosecution.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yep. The second bullet point is also related to criminal prosecution. This is our restorative court. A couple of years ago, we were successful in standing up Bloomington's own restorative court. What you might not know about the county of Hennepin is that you will have different options if you commit a crime based on the jurisdiction that you committed in. Bloomington is one of just a couple of cities that has stood up a restorative court. And so you will have more options to fix the rest of your life if that happens in Bloomington. We have seen an increase in the kinds of cases that our prosecutors handle, which are misdemeanors, gross misdemeanors and petty misdemeanors. And many of them, an increasingly large-ing, excuse me, growing number of them are, are the types of crimes that qualify for restorative court. So in 2023, we, we sort of maxed out our caseworker, our Hennepin County caseworker assigned to restorative court. And we don't want to turn people restorative court, and we don't want to turn people away. And so we talked to the county, Jennifer did a bunch of work, and we pulled together compelling argument to hire another employee, another county employee, and we proposed to pay our match requirement with public safety funding. Next slide. All right, so I mentioned briefly new initiatives. A couple of things to have on your radar. This contract management system we've been deploying, our hope and goal is that, among other things, it'll be more intuitive. There will be less sort of micro decision-making that needs to happen at the staff level, and it'll be more efficient for everybody, including legal. But the main target audience is our, the rest of all the other departments. And so we hope that it will improve the workflow and improve the product coming into our department to lessen our touches on these contracts. For those of you that don't know, we have an entire automated process. We have templates that we use, many, many, many templates, and we annually review them to ensure that they're still meeting our statutory obligations as well as the needs of our staff. The next one is our administrative hearing officer program. We have a layer of justice within the city of Bloomington that is growing. We have made some changes to create more process that's driving into our administrative hearing officer layer of justice within the city. So for example, some employment matters are now going to administrative hearing officers as opposed to going away to St. Paul and being handled there. Frankly, it's a popular approach. It's more approachable. It's more manageable. We're more able to be nimble and to help people feel comfortable in the experience. We do them here oftentimes. Right now, our panel of hearing officers is smaller than I'd like. And every year, I certify a list of panel members recommendation to Jamie, and then he acts on it, and I want to grow that. I intend to issue an RFQ in December and grow that hearing officer pool. And so with that, we're going to have more things coming in. We also are seeing, I want to say, two hearings a week, which is an actual doubling of what we've seen in the past that I've been here. So more folks are appealing their citations, and they're going through the hearing officer program. Frankly, Amir is handling them now, many of them, the code enforcement hearings, and he estimates two a week. As you all know, there was many, many, many things that were changed during the last legislative session, and we're still catching up on all of those, and some of them have a delayed start date. We need to edit policies and tweak things, and we're moving through that. I put AI guidance on there. I feel like I get an email every day about what we're going to do with AI and how we can leverage AI, and what do we need to be worried about with AI, and all the rest. And so it just felt to me like I need to lean into that and figure out what we need to do as an organization with regard to AI. So that's why that's there. We have a lot of internal workflows that can be improved for efficiency, and I think it's important to take a look at that and figure out ways we can integrate our process throughout the organization and make it clear for people the steps that they need to do in order to be in compliance with our policies and our requirements. The second to last bullet here is something that I started working on this year and frankly realized I was not prepared enough to do the work. And so I've been spending this year getting smarter about tribal law and government-to-government relations. And we hope to put in place, frankly, I'm trying to convince the state with Peter's assistance to let us use their program that they've already rolled out, but if they don't, we'll figure out something else. So we want to create some more knowledge and awareness and depth of understanding so that we can all do our job better here in the city of Bloomington. And then finally, this is what I referenced before. This isn't, this is just, Bloomington already has one, but what I really think should happen is the county should have a countywide restorative court. Justice shouldn't be different based on where you commit the crime. Your options shouldn't be different. And so I've already talked to the county about this a couple of times, and I'm going to keep working on it and hope to accomplish it in 2024. I think it'll impact us in the positive, and will certainly serve as a model for other communities. Next slide. All right. We're getting close to the end here, challenges. Want to make you aware of the obvious, right? We're relying on short-term funding for long-term staffing needs. We have statutory obligations that we are meeting with one-time money. Jamie and I have talked about this. Lori and I have talked about this. We realize what's happening. We realize that we're easing temporarily the impact on the levy, and we need to put in place some plans to address what's going to happen on the backside. We talk about it all the time, so we're aware of it. I'm not ignoring that problem. The other thing I want to point out is some deep awareness about the reliance on grant funding. So we rely on grants from the Office of Justice programs to fund our crime victim liaison position, which is a statutory obligation to victims, so that they can fully participate in the justice process. We have statutory obligations to make them, make opportunities, make the victims able to participate in the justice process. We spend a tremendous amount of time reporting and tracking and all kinds of filing and just a lot to get this money, and it's not very much money. And Jamie and I periodically discuss whether it's worth it to continue to apply. This year, we asked for enough to fund the position, and we were told sort of early on that there wasn't going to be enough money because there was a lot of applicants, and there wasn't. There isn't enough money, and we're going to have to find other sources to fund the balance of the position. So the danger of relying on these grants is that they're unpredictable, and you have to pivot quickly. And sometimes, you know, I wonder whether it's worth all the time that. We have a person in finance that works on the reporting. We have a person in civil that works on the reporting, the crime victim liaison works on the reporting, and Jen, the deputy criminal, four people working on the reporting for one position, which is, and I think we got $70,000 for it. So I don't know that that's worth it sometimes. All right, the other thing is that I mentioned the very beginning, unexpected technology changes. I've gotten, I've mentioned this already, but, you know, when those things go out and we have to pivot quickly, oftentimes, we aren't able to do that. And our process slows down, screeches to a halt, people don't get their stuff done in the way that they want to get it done at the level they want to get it done. And there's a danger in that. There's a danger to the justice system. There's a danger to individual victims. And we're aware of that, and we're tracking that. Jen's tracking specific examples. She just sent me one today. So just want to put it on your radar. The last thing is something that I mentioned earlier, and this is that we have to be able to rely on outside counsel to assist us. We had a couple of instances recently where we did not, we were denied coverage under the league for our particular litigation, and we needed to figure out what to do. We cobbled together outstanding responses to that. However, it was complicated and very disruptive to our internal operations. We also have internal investigations that are happening. They're sort of always happening throughout an organization of our size, and sometimes it's more appropriate to use outside counsel to do that work. We also have, for example, someone go out on leave, and when you're running as lean, we had someone that was a key part of our organization, our workflow, be out for several months, and we had to fill it with temp workers in order, just to keep things moving. And then the last thing I mentioned is the administrative hearing officers that we batch out. We do some of that work internally, but we also have an obligation in some instances to use outside counsel for that work. We are going to try something different, hopefully, in 2024, in that we're going to allow, or not allow, but retain attorneys as well as qualified neutrals, hoping that it'll increase the pool as well as get us very similar quality results. Next slide. All right, before I move into this E S S T update, any questions about the legal budget generally?
Questions, council? Onward.
All right. So a couple of weeks ago, you asked us to prepare an update for you all on how things are going. So I prepared sort of, what was it, Christmas carol? The past, the future? So in the past, there was direction, a task force was created, the ordinance was prepared. And then in June of 2022, you all, well, not you all exactly, but the council unanimously adopted the ordinance. And then we set about to hire some folks. We hired two staff people to implement the program and do other things as well. We are, we have created some large programs in our code within the last couple of years, for example, the opportunity housing ordinance. And the enforcement of that particular ordinance comes through the compliance division as well. So just to note that as those programs, the deployment of OHO, for example, grows, compliance will grow, enforcement will grow. That's just one example. So I don't want to leave you all with the thought that the folks, these two hires are only doing Earn Second Safe Time, they're doing other things as well. All right, and then we deployed the ordinance. We had adopted initial rules. FAQs were developed. We developed a QR code where we drive everybody to a website so that we can maintain sort of a nimble presence and tweak it as we need to. There were posters prepared and disseminated in multiple languages. And then the outreach and education has been going on. Many letters were sent. There were several briefing stories. There were trainings that occurred at the Mall of America for all of its tenants. Over 500 businesses were, received in-person visits. And then we made a minor tweak to the ordinance to address some reporting requirements on pay stubs that improved the ordinance and made it more consistent with what was happening in other cities that had Earn Second Safe leave. So it overall made compliance easier for entities that existed in several places. And then, as you all know, the governor signed Earn Second Safe Time for the state in May of this last year. Next slide. So what's been happening currently? We've been continuing with the outreach and education as you asked us to do when you adopted the ordinance. You wanted an emphasis on education and outreach in the beginning before we did any enforcement. So we have been focused heavily on that, answering a lot of calls and emails, a lot of inquiries, doing a lot of FaceTime with folks, walking place to place. And we have set up the tracking system to take in complaints and investigate and enforce. Again, that's another example of the technology that's been deployed. We are using a program called Smart Sheets to do that. We tried to use a program that we had internally as a part of the suite of applications that we already own, which is a process that all of us are required to take before we ask IT to buy any new programs. And we have to explore our existing programs and see if we can get there from there. And so that happened. And then we've been rolling out some multiple languages, some materials in multiple languages. And then September, you all adopted the Second Amendment. Now we align with the state statute, and the burdens of any sort of ambiguity between the different versions is been addressed. And I just wanted to give you a sense, sort of, one of the things, you know, when you all said, go out and tell us how we're doing, Amir, Lorpu, and I sat down and said, okay, how can we figure out, like, how is this going, right? Like, we've been doing this outreach and education, what can we do? So they did some site visits, and this is, they had 28 visits and 11 possible violations were found. So we have more opportunity for enhanced compliance with the ordinance. And the feedback that they received, the overwhelming statement that sort of came about, or came in during the compliance sampling, was that employers wanted everybody to be subject to the same requirements, right? You can't have one restaurant on the side of the food court complying and a restaurant on the other side of the food court not complying, especially because many of the food court workers work at both of those establishments. So the employers want a level playing field. We also conducted a survey, and the results are coming in hot here. The general response was positive. They are experiencing positive, they have a positive experience with having some local presence and guidance and a person they can pick up the phone and call. All right, thank you. So the next steps. The statewide ordinance is effective, or statewide law, rather, is effective in January of next year. They are going to be doing education and outreach, for the most part, in 2024. They do not plan to impose financial penalties until the following year. The note is, that I think is interesting here in particular, is that rulemaking isn't going to start until 2025. That's going to leave a gap in compliance and in education on how to comply. So it'll be especially helpful for our folks here in Bloomington that they already know how to comply with the ordinance. One of the questions you all had was sort of about what is the requirement for staffing the statewide law? We did quite a bit of research on this, and it appears that they will have a larger office of investigators with four dedicated E S S T investigators for the state of Minnesota. And it appears that they used the sort of math that Minneapolis used in setting up its Civil Rights Office. So they looked at the number of investigators, the number of cases, and the number of cases of the investigators that were specifically related to Earn Second Safe Time. And they have, they have a lot of, the majority of their cases are Earn Second Safe Time in Minneapolis. And they looked at how many hours it takes to investigate each one, et cetera, et cetera. And they grew the data out from that, pages and pages of analysis, and they ultimately came up with the numbers that they have here. With regard to next steps in Bloomington here, we want to update our initial rules to address some of the recurring questions that we're seeing and take some direction from you with regard to any next steps that you request of us tonight.
And Mr. Mayor, council members, just to wrap up, the last discussion points here were sort of the salient ones when we're talking about the legal budget, and that was the follow-up to the council question about, you know, what it means for the city that the state has adopted E S S T. My recommendation is that we stick with our current ordinance and we stick with our current staffing. And the reason is based largely in the timing that you've seen, that they're not going to really start active enforcement until 2025. They still have to go through a rulemaking process. You might recall that we had a whole year of education information just within our city, and it took that long, frankly. And so you can imagine how the state is going to do that, having to do it statewide, right? And so add in the fact that they have done some of their staff projection to account for cities who have already adopted this, and, you know, that may not be great for us, but I would say at the same time, it also provides us, well, we're going to be providing service closer to the businesses, closer to the workers, which I think means it's going to be more responsive. And that's some of the indication you got from our city attorney there in terms of what the survey is telling us, that they appreciate having that ability to contact people. What I go back to is why we adopted the ordinance in the first place, and it was to protect workers. And the information that Melissa shared, that we already have some active violations that are potential violations that we're following up on, suggests that if we step back and wait for the state to assume this responsibility, that notion of protecting workers is not going to be in place. It's going to be delayed or deferred. And I think that's a little bit contrary to what the council was hoping to accomplish when we adopted this in the first place. So largely based on the timing and some of the assumptions made by the state and the fact that we're able to do this at a much closer level, I think suggests that we should continue to do this until we have more clarification about that rulemaking process and, you know, how the state is going to perform this function. how the state is going to perform this function.
Council questions, comments? Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm still deeply skeptical of us having our own Earn Sick and Safe Time policy when the state has one. I would like more information on the violation in details, were they simply paperwork violations or not. I do think it's good that we've done education, so Bloomington businesses will be ahead of the state curve when it comes to full implementation by the state. But frankly, I don't think we should be one city amongst, I don't know how many cities there are in the state, but there's four or five with these policies. So they're relying on four or five, and the other several hundred cities don't have to fund this. You know, I think it's on the state to fund it, and that's my opinion on it. But I would like to see more, more information on those violations and what they are and, and where we're at there, so.
Mr. Malick, I bet you've got details on some of those violations.
Yes, Mayor, council members, and Councilmember Nelson. Yeah, I can go over details, just not give you the names of the businesses, and that should be fine. So, yeah, I'll just go in order of, so.
I don't think we need all 11.
No, no.
In the hour that we're looking at.
No, I'll just go through a few of them. So first restaurant that we went to and asked them about it, first there was misunderstanding of what we were talking about, and then once that was dealt with, and she said, oh, we don't have that. And then, so I asked, you know, do you mean you don't have it on the pay stubs? Or she's like, no, we don't have anything, like, there's no sick time, no PTO, nothing. And then she was like, I'm going to, you know, talk with my business partner and we'll get that dealt with. And then we went to a couple doors further down, and they had it, but she was upset because across, further down from them, they didn't. And so she was complaining that, why does she have to? Because she had workers who worked for her and worked for the other place. And she's like, you know, if she has to pay, then they should have to pay. So then she sent us over there, like, very actively calling out the names of the places and saying where we should go. So we went over there, and there were other ones where, yeah, you know, our focus initially has been on, while we did go to all the businesses, when we were checking for compliance, we focused on restaurants, since that was my experience in Minneapolis. That was the biggest problem. So when we dealt with other restaurants, again, we were running into the same problem. Either one, they would say they don't have it, or two, say they're not sure if they have it, they don't have it on the pay stubs, but they're not willing to say they don't offer it at all, and that they'll get back to us, which they didn't. So.
I think that that gives you a good sense of sort of the level. And one thing that I've learned in, in working with Amir on this is that people, employees, will work several part-time jobs, similar jobs, several of them. So they'll work, for example, at, you know, three of the same company's businesses, part-time, 20 hours a week or something. Or they'll work at this one, and then across the food court, another one, and another one, another one. And so if we don't have a level playing field, that is impacting some employers differently than others for the exactly same type of work. So the other thing I'll comment is that, and this will be the last thing, is that, you know, this Earn Sick and Safe Time ordinance is not something for somebody like me, right? Like, I have great benefits at the city of Bloomington, I have paid time off. It's for folks that, that don't, and who we don't want to show up to work when they're sick. And we, and we want them to be able to have time off to go to court to participate in the justice process. So that's who this ordinance is for, and we have a lot of those workers in the city of Bloomington.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And, and I guess I'll say, I mean, more than one thing can be true. And, and I agree with Jamie, that, I mean, this is put in place to protect workers in Bloomington, and I think that's important to protect workers in Bloomington. I agree with Councilmember Nelson, that this shouldn't, the state shouldn't simply be saying, well, as long as these cities are doing it, we don't have to staff up because those cities are taking care of it. And if they are doing that, then the state should probably throw a few bucks our way, if we're going to do this. If we're going to pick up their work, we might need to have that conversation at some point. And so as I said, I think more than one thing can be true, and I think here we've got a couple of things that are, that are true. Councilmember Loman?
So Mayor, my, my understanding, this, I'm just asking you of this, this piece here, is that 60% basically of these folks, is a little math I did here, are complying with what we've got out there, and roughly about 40% are at various stages of compliance of that 28 that we looked at, basically, right? Mayor, is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Mayor members, that's, it's a pretty small sample size. So I don't know that, I mean, if that's the math, that's the math. I don't know that, it's, it's a little less than half, or a little more than half. So we can certainly do more, but I think you're probably going to find what has been found in other cities, and that is a lack of compliance and the need to help.
I want to, I want to keep it short. It's, am I understanding that right from the sample size, right? 60, 40 split? 28? So I got 11 that aren't complying, which is roughly 40%. Okay. You know, I totally agree with my, my colleague here. You know, you talk about, you know, the level playing field, you know, I mean, where's that level playing field, right? Where, you know, where is it? You know, is that state level, is it the federal level? But gosh, that is a lot of, you know, 40% is really high. And so, you know, in the idea that we were trying to protect, you know, our employees that are in these areas, I think that's really important. But again, you know, like you say, Mayor, with the lack of funding, you know, it's kind of like, I mean, I just, I look at this budget here that we're being presented, and then I kind of go back to what Councilmember De La Sondra said earlier. You know, I'm like, you know, where, where does the, you know, how do we balance these things out? You know, on the one end, you've got those folks who really need us to protect their, their pay. And then on the other hand, you know, we're, you know, with one hand, we're taking it out of their, their wallet from the other side. So it's not easy. That's all I can say. And I just, you know, if we're going to do this, I think we've got to figure out a way to leverage more funding to, to, to pay for this, you know?
I do think, I agree with you, Councilmember, and I think it might be, as we put together our legislative agenda for this legislative session, I think this should be something that we should address, without question.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, I think that we could insert some language into the legislative platform to pursue state funding for, you know, local authorities that have their own ordinance in place to, that are essentially being delegated the authority, because that's what they're accounting for here, right? Is, they're saying, you take care of this district for us, or whatever their definition is. And I, I think that we can work with our delegation to get some, at least advance some language in that regard.
I think that would make good sense.
If we do that, make sure, you know, we can take on more jurisdictions than just the ones we have.
Council, anything additional here? Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Manchin. Well, that wraps up our departmental budget presentations for the year. And we have a special budget meeting coming up on?
Next Monday.
Next Monday. I knew it was coming up. Next Monday, we have a special budget meeting to kind of pull all the pieces together and continue this discussion. So thanks to all the staff who've been in front of us, thanks to Ms. Carlson for herding all the cats and pulling this all together, and to Mr. Verbrugge for making sure that it all works together as well. And.
Let's get through next Monday, Mr.
Let's go to the next, yeah, I agree. I agree. But we have the information that we need to move forward now. So, and thank you for that.
Good.
Our last agenda item tonight, council, is item 5.5, our City Council Policy and Issue Update. I'll kick it off with a recap of our listening session. We heard from one speaker this evening, Ms. Pam Palmer, came forward and broke it down into three different pieces. She wanted more information regarding the animal shelter in Bloomington, and was glad to see that there was at least a long-term plan somewhat in place to, to address the issue, and that there was a short-term proposal to perhaps upgrade the existing facility to make it a little bit more habitable for the animals that find themselves there. Ms. Palmer had questions about PFAS and what the city, the discussion regarding the PFAS that we had in closed session, and is it related to other things? And I think we addressed some of those questions in terms of the, the potential litigation that the city was partaking in and part of. And then Ms. Palmer asked once again, and she had sent a number of emails to us in the past, I think each of us have received the emails, that our Office of Equity, Equity, Inclusion, and Welcoming, is it right? Belonging, that's it. Her, her concern was that it was not all-inclusive, that it was too focused on, on, on race and not including things like age, or disability, or income level, or socioeconomic status. And we had a good discussion about that as well. So I appreciate Ms. Palmer stopping by and talking to us this evening. And she, as I said, was our only speaker for this week's listening session. Mr. Verbrugge, I'm going to turn it over to you and assume you're going to run down election details, or is that an assumption that I shouldn't be making?
Well, I'm happy to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Why don't you do that for us?
So I think that most residents, or hopefully most residents, are aware of the election outcomes from last Tuesday. We had our city clerk here earlier in the meeting, Ms. Capione, to certify our results, the canvass of results. And I think what folks are really looking for is what's next, especially for the ballot questions. So the, the first project that's going to move is, is likely to be the Bloomington Ace Garden renovation. We had been looking at that as a potential phased project and trying to do it over a couple of years. I think that staff and others have figured out the, the best way to do this, both from a economy and also time management perspective, and trying to minimize lost revenues, as we actually probably will do it all at once. So we're actually looking at spring of '25 so that we have enough advance notice. We'd have a shutdown date, middle of March, soon as that last game is played, and then hope to have her back open within about six months, seven months, so that we can get the next season off and running. So that's the current thought process, and we're going to approach our planning with that in mind, and, and hope that it comes together that way. So end of, you know, '25 is when we'd see the big renovation completed. The, the Community Health and Wellness Center project, want to recognize that what we did not want to do was spend several million dollars putting together a concept plan, and not knowing the outcome of the ballot question. And so we have a fair amount of work that we have to do, and a fair amount of community engagement to figure out exactly what the elements and components of that Health and Wellness Center will be, make sure that the community has an active voice in that. Council is aware that we had utilized the Creekside Medium proposal from 2019 as a baseline for some of our assumptions and talking about things that could potentially be included. But we will start that engagement, I would think, very early in 2024. So our team will start working on what a schedule for that looks like. And then for the third project, I'm sorry, so we'd, we'd hope to conclude much of that engagement and start the design planning process, so that in '25, we could hopefully start to move forward with the project, and hopefully have it open by '27, I think is our working timeline right now. And then finally, the Nine Mile Creek Corridor Project, our Parks and Recreation leadership will take a look at how we're going to do the engagement process there, because I think the biggest issue that council members heard throughout the fall, and staff certainly heard as well, was primarily related to the presence of bikes, and whether there's going to be a bike path, and some of the other components, and making sure that we maintain some of the, you know, making sure that we maintain the natural environment and not causing damage to the ecosystem by virtue of an improvement project. And so I think that's the, the biggest issue to be resolved as we start to put together that plan. And again, there'll be active community engagement for that as well. So once we have timeframes for these various engagement activities, we'll start to share them with the community and make sure they understand the process for how we're going to move forward, and a little bit more clarity on what those timelines are going to be. Is that sufficient, Mr. Mayor?
It is sufficient. Quick questions, Councilmember De La Sondra, or questions related to this, or?
Yes, related to the Community Center in specific, yeah. Not a question, just a, an advocacy, an ad-vocation, I don't know if that's the word. I'd want to advocate for, people are, people who are not, to your point, not super clear on what just passed, like, really, the, we, I talked a lot with folks about, like, the, the way that through the Parks Master Plan, Parks and Rec is doing kind of like initial, and then a 30% design, a 60% design review, and like, really working through community engagement and those things. I highly recommend we use that process in this case, and that it is broadcast as broadly as we can, including, you know, in the briefing every month, like, let's get a calendar in place and, and get it in there and put it on there all the time, and whatever we can do, because people are going to want to be involved. And I, I think, you know, given the fact that we can't spend millions of dollars just to let people know what's going on, we have to use every lever at our disposal, and I think consistency of that is going to be really important. So trying to forecast that out and, and get that on people's calendars ahead of time and everything is going to be really important. And of course, I don't, I'm sure all of you, I'm here to town hall, whatever you need from, like, as a council member too, right? We are a lever in that whole thing and can do outreach and engagement as well. So utilize us as resources in that frame.
Good point, Councilmember.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just a very quick point. I know this will be part of the plan, but just want to say it explicitly, to put together a plan for the current programs and activities at Creekside while they're displaced.
Yes.
So that those users know what's coming and can have a voice in that, and where, wherever that's going to be, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, appreciate that. Councilmember De La Sondra, appreciate those comments as well. One thing I should have said is, just to clarify once again, if folks didn't fully understand the outcome or the consequence of the yes vote, is that it will, it will trigger a one-half percent sales tax increase. It's not 1.5, right? It wasn't 0.5 for each project, and we continued to hear this right up to Election Day, that there was some confusion in that regard. It is a half-cent sales tax. And we'll make the necessary notifications to the state of Minnesota, the Department of Revenue has to go through their process. Our anticipation is that it would probably be April 1st when that sales tax would take effect because of the process timing with the Department of Revenue.
Thank you for that clarification. If you could put that all in script form for me for Wednesday, that'd be wonderful.
Got it.
Council, anything additional to bring forward tonight, Councilmember?
I do have one other item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I just, I just want to introduce somebody. And Damon, you want to step up from behind your chair over there? Damon's been sitting over here, and he didn't have anything to do for the last four hours, so I thought he should be able to get up. So Damon Bitney has been a commander with our police department for a number of years, and just a couple weeks ago was recently promoted to be deputy chief. And so, you know, we run a lot of new employees up here. We don't necessarily run up our promoted employees. And so I just want to take a moment for the community to see who is in leadership in our police department. Really appreciate Damon's leadership and his demonstration of his worthiness to step into this deputy chief role, and we're really excited to have him take that next step. Damon, I don't know if you want to say any, deputy chief, I don't know if you want to say anything.
Just thank you all for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. And if we can help out on our side or whatever, if you need me to speak more than I am now, I'd be happy. I know the chief's going to blow up my phone by saying that, but thank you so much.
Congratulations, DC. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Verbrugge. Councilmember Loman?
Thank you. I just wanted, I've had the opportunity over, over a long service I just wanted to, I've had the opportunity over, over a long service to have the opportunity to work with different secretaries. And I know this could be one of Matt's last meetings. And I wanted to just say how much I appreciate your work. We got one more, okay? Well, this will just carry over for the next one. I didn't want to make, I didn't want to, you know, one time before I did it when the person wasn't even around, and it wasn't even worth it. So we'll do it now while you're here. But, you know, it's a very challenging time in which you had to be secretary, especially with COVID as part of it. I'm not gifted at travel-type things either, so I appreciate the, you know, the help that you provided with that, and just so many of the things that this, this role has really progressed and changed as I've been a council member. And wanted to just thank you for what you have provided to the council and to the community and to the staff that, that are around that. So I just want to let you know how much I appreciate your service to this group. It's an easy role, and I know I'm a tough person to, to work with, and so I appreciate your willingness to, to work with me. And then secondarily, I wanted to mention that a person who I had the opportunity to work with did pass away, Becky Schindler. I'm not sure if I said her name. Schindler, thank you. I knew her as a different name when she first came on board. But she did pass away, and I get to know her several years back when I was an intern in the planning department. She taught me the joys of country western music. And so to this day, and the mayor will attest to it, I now sing some country western songs at, at a local bar that will be non-disclosed at this point in time. And then we've had the opportunity over many years to go to the Public Finance Conference at Ellers. And just her commitment to the community and all of what she has put forth in Bloomington really, I think, reflects what so many of our employees, that they just care about this community, put all that they can, all that they, they are into this community. And I just want to, you know, thank her and her family for all the, the time and what they have contributed to our, our community. And I, and I'll keep on singing those really bad country western songs, and maybe I'll get my dog back that I never owned, and all those types of things. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Councilmember, on both fronts. Thanks for those kind words. Counsel, anything else to add tonight? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Got a motion and a second to adjourn? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0. Thank you much for the conversation tonight, counsel. Well done. Staff, well done also. Appreciate the conversation and all the presentations and the information. And thank you to our residents who are here this evening and who are watching, and their contributions to this meeting as well. Have a good rest of the week. Enjoy the beautiful weather.